All right, I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education for Tuesday, April 23rd, 2019. Laura, would you please call the roll? Sorry, I caught you off-guard.
That's okay. Benford. Fuqua. Garcia.
Here.
Gabhart.
Here.
Marquis.
Here.
Myers.
Sergeant.
Here.
All right, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so, welcome, everybody. This is clearly a crowded meeting, so let's all be conscientious as we move through the room of other people, and let's not hit anyone or trip over people. And, as always, this will be a respectful place in which we can have rich discussions and talk about all of our students and their needs. Another reminder that the mission of the Boulder Valley School District is to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children thrive and are prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. Okay, so they're about to take down this building, and I thought we had it at least for a couple more hours. All right, as you might notice, some of the walls are empty, so I hope that we have light for the rest of this. Okay, so, as always, we're going to begin with the superintendent's report.
Board President Marquis, members of the board, we have a couple of things to discuss. It's been an eventful week. I want to start by thanking our community for last Wednesday. It was a scary time, I think, for students, parents, and community members all throughout the state of Colorado. I really want to thank our local law enforcement for their support. I want to thank our team, our communications team, and just the understanding of our families when we had to close schools on Wednesday. I think it was an unprecedented event, and just really appreciated the way that the community came together with the main focus of making sure we keep students safe, which is why we decided to close schools. So I just wanted to say some thank yous there. Last night was our last Latino Parent Advisory Council meeting of the year, and so I wanted to thank the members of our Latino Parent Advisory Council. For those who don't know, this is a new council that was set up this year that we developed during my first hundred days to get the perspective of our Latino parents and make sure that they have an equal voice as we think about changes and improvements in the school district. And so, I really just appreciate their opportunity to meet last night. And finally, I'd like to make a few comments about the reason that most of you are here tonight. I know we have an engaging sustainability presentation, but I don't think that that's the reason that folks are here. So, first of all, I'd like to thank you all for being here. I think that it's amazing that our community has come out to be engaged on this topic. And I want everyone to know that first and foremost, we respect the public common process that allows parents to have a voice in our school district. We also recognize in a fully engaged community that we won't always see eye to eye. My hope for tonight is that regardless of what people's views are, they're respectful of everyone's perspective. As a school district, our hope is to bring everyone together, not divide us. Everyone has the right to be heard. Many of our speakers here tonight are here in response to a community email that served as a call to action and questions-guidance that our staff sent this week to principals regarding assemblies and guest speakers, in which this was a failed attempt to help them navigate questions that have come up following the public complaint board that you'll hear tonight. This communication was unfortunately unclear and confused many on our position of support for our transgender students, and for this, I apologize. The Boulder Valley School District has long been a leader in the support and celebration of diversity. We are nationally known for our practices and policies that support our LGBTQ community. BVSD stands firmly behind our transgender students. There may not be a more vulnerable population in our school district or a group of students who count on us more to protect them, and we're proud of our policies and practices that make our transgender students feel welcome and safe. We have many families, many whom I've met over the course of the past nine months, that have moved here for that specific reason. At the same time, we recognize that we have a diverse community who may differ in their beliefs on this topic in addition to others. As a public school district, we have an obligation to respect all of our families and their beliefs. As we've reflected on our past practices, we have a history of working with parents who have asked us for accommodations and flexibility around programming that conflicts with their beliefs. Where appropriate, we have not judged those beliefs and have worked with families to accommodate these individual desires. While everyone may not agree with this practice, we're charged to serve everyone of our 31,000 students and their families, and have found this approach has allowed us to work with individuals without compromising our core values. We utilized this approach during the presentation at Superior in November that has triggered the complaint that is on the agenda this evening. We support schools in teaching about gender identity in a way that promotes an inclusive environment for all students. We want to ensure that our teachers have the ability to teach important concepts like this without fear. Our goal remains to ensure all of our families feel welcome and safe while providing an inclusive and comprehensive educational experience for our students. I'm proud to be a part of BVSD, a district and community where we're not afraid to tackle difficult topics. Again, thank you all for being here, and that's all for my comments.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Anderson. Board members, do you have any questions for Dr. Anderson at this time? Okay. So, our next item is public participation. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the Board first confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items, and students will be heard first on the topic. Limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. So, a couple of comments on that. I really ask you to stop at two minutes, and I'll start saying "stop" at two minutes. So try to get your thoughts in those two minutes. If you can't, send us an email. We read all of our emails, and we pay attention, so please respect the two minutes. We have a lot of people here whose voice wants to be heard. The other piece is, we have too many people to try to fit them in in the first part of the meeting, so we are going to go with one hour. The hour's going to start when I finish going through these comments. So, recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks, therefore, should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There is a lighting system on the podium, starting at green when your two-minute starts, turning to yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turning to red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the Board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. All right, so, Laura, do we have...
Do you want to say we'll hear the rest after the meeting?
And we'll hear the rest after the meeting. So if you still want to speak at the end of the meeting, stick around, and we'll open up public comment again, all right? Laura, do you have a list?
I shared the school thing that goes on the TV. I shared that with you.
Okay.
You can read the names if you'd like me to.
Oh, okay.
Do you have that? Because I was reordering as people were standing here, so I could get the students up there.
Okay.
Okay?
Gotcha.
And I do have one student that I will text you that chose to speak with her mom. She's right at that 30, or that number 30, 32, 33, so we'll want to make sure that she gets in that list before you cut off the one hour.
Okay, so you're going to read the names this evening?
I can read the names.
Great.
Okay.
All right. So we're going to start at 6:17.
And I apologize if I mixed something up. If you think you should be in this list, let me know. Cardi A.M.
Meyer-Lashk.
Hello. Hello, my name is Cardi Meyer-Lashk, and I'm a 3rd grader at Whittier Elementary School. And I know what it's like to have an LGBTQ family, and it hurts my heart that people don't like to talk about it. And kids need to know about this kind of thing. So some parents are trying to get teachers to stop teaching about transgender students, and that makes me feel scared to go to school. And I don't think it makes other LGBT families and students feel good either. So if you don't teach about trans students, I mean, others will feel scared to go to school. Thank you for listening, and good night.
Okay, and it'd be great if we could hold applause or any other kind of response to each speaker, because it's time-consuming, and it doesn't make us all feel welcome necessarily.
Hi, my name is Kasai, and I'm here from Manhattan, and, like, I have a lot of friends at Manhattan that are LGBTQIA+. And they're really good friends of mine, and I have a good relationship with them. And, like, I personally, like the last kid said, would not want to go to school if I didn't have all my friends around. And, I mean, I've gone to school with multiple LGBTQIA students, and, I mean, we're all humans. I mean, it doesn't matter. I don't, I think that we should all just, I mean, we should all just be able to go to school and learn what we learn, so yeah.
Hannah F.
Hey, so, I'm Hannah, and I'm, like, a completely normal person. I brush my teeth in the morning, I just study when I get home, I watch TV. I'm just pretty average, but, like, one thing that's not average is I've been, like, called names, and I've been picked on for being, like, a lesbian. And I don't see why it matters, because we're at school to learn. We're not at school to, like, to be anything other than who we are, and we're at school mostly just to learn about how the world really is. And I don't see how a class can adequately prepare us for life if it doesn't teach us about everything that's in the world, not just some things. So I'm here to ask why we're trying to exclude certain people if the world and school should prepare us for everything. Thank you.
Kai S.
Hi, I'm Kai. I'm here from Fairview. I use he/him/his pronouns, and I identify as transgender. It's really hard to hear people saying that they don't want to learn about my community or they don't think that I should be in schools or be, like, voiced in schools. And that's really hard because in-school is one of the places where it's really hard to feel safe and it's really hard to feel accepted. So I just wanted to suggest some things to help transgender students feel more accepted and more safe in the school community. Gender-neutral bathrooms is one. They really feel safe to us, and some gender bathrooms, we just don't, the students don't feel super safe in them. And sports teams, if a male, a female, and then a gender non-conforming or some other third option was represented, then that would feel a lot better to us, too. And I was, I just want everyone to have a voice, and I want everyone to feel represented and safe in school.
Max S.
Hi, I'm Max. I'm from New Vista High School, and at New Vista, we practice equity. Equity is making sure there's equality for all. It's about having the proper places and helps in place so everyone feels safe. Honestly, I think every school in the BVSD should, you know, practice being equitable and practice equity, just so everyone feels safe and feels like they have a voice within the learning environment. And, I mean, I identify as a trans male, and I use he/him/his pronouns, and if I was not accepted, or if people told me to stop voicing my opinions, I would be very upset. I would rather be hated for who I am than loved for who I am not.
Jacob V.
Hello? Hello? Okay. Yes. So, I'm Jacob Vialadis. I'm from Manhattan Middle School. I'm an 8th grader. I have two moms and a little sister who is great. And I think we shouldn't tolerate bullying at all. Like, it doesn't matter if it's bullying towards a certain group of people or a different group of people, or a group of people that we feel should be bullied, or, like, someone we hate. It just shouldn't be allowed. And the fact that nine adults and families feel that their faith is, or our beliefs are contradicting their faith, and the fact that they have enough power to, like, just completely, like, the fact that we're even having this conversation about this is pretty messed up, so, yeah.
Let's try not to applaud.
Tyler Z.
Hi, I'm Tyler. I identify as a trans male, and basically, I don't really, I think that everybody should be, as people before me have said, I think people should be able to be equal, and, like, people should not think lower of others because of their race, religion, gender, disability, or ability. And I'm also from Manhattan, so that's my beliefs, so I'm just here to try to help that, I guess, and, yeah.
Elena V.
Hi, I'm Jacob's little sister, Lana. When I heard about this, it really hurts me because I have a bunch of friends who are, like, lesbian and gay. A lot of them are lesbian, like, I have one friend, her name's Ivy, she's lesbian, and it really hurts me to know that there are some people who don't like that, that people want to be themselves, and they, but there are some people who want them to be who they envision them to be. Like, sometimes they envision them to be just girls. You cannot be a girl who changes into a boy, or a boy who changes into a girl. And I think that that's really messed up, that you can't, like, do that. And I think that if we can make it so that people stop believing that, that would really help all of those kids actually believe in themselves so that they can know that they actually, they can belong in the area and not feel like they have to be pushed out of the area that they want to be in. Thank you.
Kate M.
Hi, my name is Kate McCarthy. I am part of the leadership team of the Gender and Sexuality Alliance at Fairview High School, and my little brother asked if I could bring this, so. So when looking at this issue, I think it's worth noting just how much damage this would do to LGBTQ students. If you look at the bullying rates and suicide rates among transgender youth, it becomes clear just how much they need our support. A study last year conducted through the American Academy of Pediatrics found that over half of male trans students had attempted suicide. Non-binary students had a 41.7 rate, and female trans students had a 30% rate of attempted suicide. Meanwhile, female and male cis students had respectively 14.7 and 9.8. These numbers, at least to me, are gut-wrenching. They're already high, and the way to combat this is not to silence gender issues. These students need our support. They don't need to feel like their gender identity is taboo because we aren't even allowed to discuss it in our schools. BVSD's district mission is to create learning opportunities so that all children thrive and to provide a safe environment for all students and staff. Is the way to achieve this through silence? I, myself, am Catholic. I have grown up with religious ideals my whole life, and the religion I know preaches love. It preaches that God loves everyone, and in my opinion, God shouldn't be used as a tool to silence. Thank you.
Ainsley H.
Hello, my name is Ainsley Hutchison, and this year I have had the incredible honor of leading the Gender and Sexuality Alliance at Fairview High School. Seeing the kids that I've worked with grow into leaders in their community has been an absolute privilege, and I wouldn't change anything about it for the world. And also, we have done a lot of work with outreach into other schools, like Southern Hills Middle School, and into other, with other younger kids. And one of the things that has struck me most about these outreach programs that we've done is how little these kids know about what they're feeling and how they feel that they need to be feeling. A lot of these kids, when they ask me questions, I'm sorry for my voice, I'm a little shaky, a lot of these kids think that what they're feeling is wrong. And in my opinion, the best way to change this is through the education that they receive every day. When we teach kids about math, we're teaching them that math is a part of the world, and math is, math is great, math is good. When we teach kids about different books in English classes, we're teaching them that those are, the values in those books are the values that they should hold. When we teach these kids, when we silence this education into this community, we're teaching kids that what they're feeling, something that is completely central to their identity, is wrong, that it shouldn't be talked about, and that they shouldn't be talked about. And seeing how this has hurt these children myself, it really makes me very angry. And so, what I came here to tell you today is that seeing all these faces, some that I know and some that I don't, it makes me really happy. And what I want all of these faces to show you is that education is the way to keep them happy. And as my colleague Kate said, keeping these kids happy is the best way to keep them alive. Thank you so much.
Ray B.
Hello, my name is Ray Belmont. I'm a freshman at Boulder High School, and I'm here, I'm here in response to the KE appeal. I have listened to the concerns of the parents of faith in their desire to opt out of what they consider to be a controversial subject. I've also heard them say that they want all children to feel included and accepted, and that families should be open to different points of view. How will these families learn about diverse points of view when they are choosing to opt out of important discussions? The only reason that gender is considered a controversial subject is because there's a lack of education and a lot of misinformation. Allowing protected groups to opt out of such important subjects is a danger to both their children and transgender kids. It's a danger to transgender kids who are judged and are frequently subjected to bullying. It is also dangerous to transgender children who are still struggling to understand their gender. These kids may lack a role model and may lack education on what is happening in their brain and bodies. Without support and education, they are more likely to be depressed, anxious, and suicidal. Some of these kids who are struggling with their gender may very well be members of these families of faith who want to opt out. For children who are opted out by their parents, they risk growing up to be ignorant, narrow-minded, and potentially a danger to those they judge, people who are just trying to live their lives. I applaud BVSD for bringing such important topics to schools and for maintaining these topics as policy. Thank you for listening.
Silas F.
Hello, my name is Silas Fox. I go to Monarch High School. I'm a senior there, and I'm also the president of the Gender and Sexuality Acceptance Club. I really just wanted to express that I have been shoved into lockers, I have been pushed down for using the wrong bathroom because people are not educated about issues that directly affect me. And because they aren't educated, what my school tries to do is we try to make that better, make it safer for kids like me. And by taking away education of transgender issues, it completely erases that entire narrative. It erases that attempt for further education so that more people can understand what we're going through. Yeah.
Jamie Gentry Cunningham.
Hello, my name is Jamie, and I'm the proud mom of eight-year-old twins that attend Aspen Creek. My kids have been there for the last six years, starting with two years of preschool. From the beginning, my family has felt supported, included, and protected in our school. We moved to BVSD because we wanted our kids to get a great education, and also because my daughter is transgender. We knew this district would be, would be safe for her to live authentically in. I am not the only person that has done this. There are many families, I personally know, that have moved across state or country to put their trans or gender-diverse kids into BVSD, and we are appreciative of the protections that are in place for our kids. Sometimes it really does mean life and death for them. I know we have already heard these stats, but I really think they weren't repeating. The American Academy of Pediatrics revealed in September of 2018 that 51% of transgender male adolescents, 42% of non-binary adolescents, and 30% of transgender female adolescents have attempted suicide at least once. The one thing that is crystal clear from the youth surveyed, though, was that supportive families and inclusive schools are key to their success and well-being. Our kids need to feel worth beyond gender. When you tell someone they don't exist over and over again, at some point, they'll start to believe you. As a side note, by letting parents opt out of instructional events that have to do with gender identity, you are through actions making my daughter and others like her feel like their existence is not worthy. I'm also wondering why the word "instructional" was chosen for this memo, because in my opinion, there's nothing instructional about learning about gender diversity. No one is instructing anyone to do anything, just simply trying to teach tolerance, just make it a little easier for our kids to exist in school. I'm asking you to please continue including and protecting my daughter and other gender awesome kids in your school.
Rachel Gellert. And on deck, we have Elizabeth Meyer and Nicole Spear.
Hi, my name is Rachel Gellert, and I'm here representing Boulder County Public Health. I am a program specialist with Oasis, a public health program that supports lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, intersex, asexual, and queer youth across Boulder Valley School District. Statistics from the BVSD Healthy Kids Colorado Survey tell us that LGBTQ youth in our district experience higher rates of bullying, harassment, school absence, depression, self-harm, and suicidal thoughts than their straight and cisgender peers. It doesn't have to be this way. We know that when students are able to see themselves in their curriculum and teachers include LGBTQ representation in the conversation, these outcomes improve. Inclusive curriculum affirms diverse identities, which in turn reduces bullying, fosters a safer school environment, and prepares our students for the real world. Gender identity is not just for LGBTQ people. We all have a gender identity, including cisgender people whose identity aligns with the gender that they were assigned at birth. We all face harmful stereotypes due to our gender identity. We all express our gender in ways that are unique. We all live in a society that requires reflection on gender identity to prevent bullying, discrimination, dating abuse, and sexual violence. It is simply a fact of life that gender exists on a spectrum. The memo submitted places an undue burden on teachers, erases the identities of transgender, gender-expansive, and intersex students, and it robs students of a comprehensive educational experience. This memo is deeply harmful and unacceptable to our students, educators, and community. We must not sacrifice our most important principles, principles that help our students grow to be thriving members of our community. In the words of Randy Barber, Chief Communications Officer for the district, "This is fairly typical in BVSD to have our students learn about inclusivity and about compassion to other people and their differences." We urge you to continue to stand by these values. Thank you.
Elizabeth Meyer.
My name is Liz Meyer. I'm here as a parent and a former high school teacher, researcher, legal consultant, professor, author, and I currently teach a graduate course on gender in education. BVSD has been doing the right thing by incorporating lessons about gender and working with nationally-recognized and respected external consultants. Their existing practices are supported by federal case law, research on child development, and pedagogical best practices. This parental notification mandate against, places, is against kids' best interests and places a burden on teachers. Gender is already, always, a part of the school curriculum. Kids are always, already, being taught about boys and girls, and in some of the better schools, about transgender and non-binary kids. If teachers need to notify parents anytime they want to teach about gender, this will have a chilling effect on teachers' ability to talk about this topic. They may avoid the extra burden and the added scrutiny this new practice would generate and will act like a gag order on all kinds of lessons about diversity, families, and human development. This complaint is coming from parents who don't want certain lessons about gender taught to their kids. They argue that if you teach about trans people existing and deserving to be safe, that you violate their religious values. They believe if we recognize non-binary students... They believe if we recognize non-binary students and teach about pronouns, we're going against their faith and demonizing them. What these practices do is describe reality, expose students to the true diversity of our society, and literally saves lives. There's ample research on the harms of transphobia in schools, but I don't have time to go into it here. You can read my blog, I just posted today on Psychology Today, if you want to read more about it. I also study and teach about Title IX and First Amendment issues in schools. We know in order to address sex discrimination, reduce bullying, harassment, homophobia, transphobia, and improve gender equity, kids and adults need to understand gender, including the harms of gender stereotypes and the danger of relying on gender binaries to shape our view of the world. We also know that religion should not be guiding decisions about the curriculum and participation in public schools. My kid needs to see himself and his family in school, as do trans and non-binary kids. These are our schools too. Thank you.
Nicole Spear. On deck, we have Kayla Galway and Dawn Wilson.
My name is Nicole Spear. My pronouns are she and her. My oldest child is a student in BVSD. Both of my children are cisgender, which means their gender identities correspond with their genders assigned at birth. I am also a devout Christian, and giving formal consideration to this complaint would challenge my family's core beliefs, which stress unconditional love and acceptance, and compel us to protect the most vulnerable populations in our communities. Our trans and non-binary youth are our most vulnerable youth. This claim is not political. It is backed by a wealth of scientific evidence. Ignoring this evidence, giving weight to this complaint, and implementing the district's new guidelines for principles on LGBTQ topics will put this group of students in even more danger. In addition to transgender and non-binary youth having astronomical rates of suicide attempts, the Human Rights Campaign found that trans and queer youth are twice as likely to be physically assaulted as their peers. The 2013 National School Climate Survey found that seventy-five percent of LGBTQ youth faced bullying at school. In contrast to the many additional studies documenting the risk of physical and emotional harm to LGBTQ youth, there is not a single published study demonstrating that exposure to inclusive teachings about gender identity puts any of our youth at risk of harm. The risks to transgender and non-binary youth can be mitigated by creating inclusive schools, by hearing a complaint that calls inclusive gender identity practices in our public schools a political view, and implementing guidelines that make it harder for schools to discuss gender identity, you would send the false message to our trans and non-binary youth that their gender identity is dangerous, and that parents such as myself need to protect our children from spaces where LGBTQ topics are discussed. This complaint and the new guidelines you have put forward on LGBTQ topics would forsake protections for vulnerable students to appease prejudices in our community. They will put our trans and queer youth at increased risk of harm. I ask the school board to deny this complaint and to rescind the district's wrongful guidance on this topic. To do anything less sends the message that our schools value the psychological comfort of misinformed parents over the psychological and physical safety of our most vulnerable youth. Thank you.
Kayla Galway.
Do I speak into either mic? Uh, I'm Kayla Galway. Uh, I use she and her pronouns, and I live in Boulder. I think it is very important that we acknowledge the difference between religious freedom and personal beliefs, as you hear people speak on this complaint today. Uh, there was a period of time in the United States where many white Christians strongly held the conviction and core belief that racial integration and interracial marriage were serious sins. In this respect, religious freedom was a widely-used argument against the desegregation of schools, as parents claimed to believe it was a sin. Today, this sounds ridiculous and oppressive to most and would certainly not be considered reasonable, but at that time, it was considered one of the main valid arguing points, just as religious freedom is now, uh, being used for restricting conversations on LGBTQIA topics and gender topics in public schools. Uh, what happened over the last fifty years? Did interracial marriage being a core sin disappear from the tenets of Christianity? Or was it never there? It was just the personal belief of a specific group of people? The core beliefs of Christianity are based around love, kindness, and understanding, not exclusion. Not all Christians believe that LGBTQ topics and gender topics are sinful, only some do. In the end, anti-LGBTQ sentiments are personal feelings and should be treated as such. Uh, parents have to discuss many complicated topics with their children, and many of those topics are introduced in school. This is the nature of parenting and of the world. By saying that parents can opt their children out of specific topics that revolve around other children's lived identities, you are institutionally enforcing the possibility that those identities are considered invalid or less than. How does that align with the BVSD values of inclusion and equity? The memo that was recently created should be retracted, and this complaint should be dismissed so that we can prioritize the safety of all children of BVSD.
Dawn Wilson.
Hi, my name is Dawn Wilson. I represent my family, and I'm here to support the KE appeal. As an educator, my job is to educate students with facts. E equals MC squared. The sun is the center of the solar system. The nineteen fifty-four Supreme Court ruling on Brown versus the Board of Education, these are all facts that students are taught. Even things that we are fairly confident about are still called theories, like the cell theory and the theory of evolution. I am, however, not allowed to teach worldviews, including my own. If I was a flat-earther, I would not be able to share this worldview with my students. But if some, but some children are being told that their worldview is hateful because they do not agree with a differing worldview. This is discriminatory and bullying. We certainly need to acknowledge that there are differing worldviews, and that we need to respect all of them. We also need to teach our students to respect all worldviews without name-calling. Respectful disagreement is the basis of our society. No matter where we come from or what we believe, we as teachers are to come to the classroom with a neutral viewpoint of view. I ask you, board, to also come to the table and view this KE appeal in a neutral and unbiased viewpoint. This appeal is about parents having a right to choose what their children's learn and to be informed about what they are being taught. Let me read that again, because this, this is really what the KE appeal is about. The appeal is about parents having a right to choose what their children are learning and to be informed on what they are being taught. Ultimately, parents still have the rights and control over their children, what their children are being taught, and no one has the immunity to override these immutable and inalienable rights. That is why I support the KE appeal. Thank you.
Kirsten Marolf. And on deck, Nathan Marolf and Angela Young.
Hi, my name is Kirsten Marolf, and I'm the mother of two students in BVSD. I'm here to support the KE appeal. I'm still trying to wrap my head around the reason that I'm here tonight. I was here two weeks ago also. To recap, several parents at a neighboring school asked to opt their children out of some, obviously, you can look around the room, controversial material over five months ago, and they are still awaiting a complete response from the district. As a concerned parent of students at an elementary school in Lafayette, I am also waiting your answer too. Are you, as the school board, championing due process and committed to providing equal treatment for all concerned parents? Or are you ignoring BVSD policies, specifically IGAI and INB, and putting off the sincere questions of concerned parents regarding the curriculum being taught to their children? Two weeks ago, I stood here and asked you for respect, which is defined as due regard for the feelings, wishes, rights, or traditions of others. However, your response as a board two weeks ago and the sparse or complete lack of communication I have personally received when sending emails from the principal of my children's school and from you, Dr. Anderson, lacks respect. Sadly, what I have learned is that people in the highest levels of my children's school district disrespect parents. What we are asking for tonight is for you, as the BVSD school board, to practice respect. Please review the way that this complaint was handled. Please work to restore our trust in you as educators and administrators. Please attempt to look at this issue with impartiality. And please follow the policies that were forged back in nineteen eighty-seven, I think, about controversial issues, to provide guidance for this and similar situations. Because respect needs to be honored and reciprocated in order for all students to truly have a place in BVSD. Please vote yes to review the KE appeal. Thank you.
Nathan Marolf. On deck, we've got Angela Young, Erin Young.
Can speakers please speak more clearly and loudly into the microphone so we can hear?
If you're on deck, start heading towards the podium too, please.
Hello, I was here two weeks ago too. Uh, my name is Nathan. I've got two kids at Ryan Elementary, and I'm here to support the KE appeal. I've enjoyed my, there you go, experience as a parent at Ryan, and I'm looking forward to the years ahead when all three of my children are going to be there. One of the blessings that I've discovered of having kids in schools, getting to meet the community around me and getting to know neighbors because of the commonality of having our kids in the same school. I believe that part of living in community is the mutual respect and tolerance we share for others around us, and that the school district should be about the business of making sure that tolerance is fostered, especially in the case of concerned and invested parents. To that point, it's clear that the district failed to foster a tolerant environment regarding the subject matter of the KE appeal. Instead, it's clear that the opposite has occurred and that the district acted intolerantly toward concerned parents. This should not be happening in a BVSD. I know there are a wide variety of belief systems, backgrounds, religions, and nationalities represented in the school district. It is the duty of the district, therefore, to treat all members with equal tolerance, not favoring one over the other, or being intolerant of one person while respecting the other. We are invested parents. We should all be clearly informed of what is being taught in our schools, because the school district should value its constituents, parents, and children, and work to accommodate everyone in the school district without bias or intolerance toward any one particular group. Again, it is clear that this has not been the case, and is why I am here to support the KE appeal. A vote against this appeal suggests that the district is both explicitly and implicitly intolerant of some of the families that constitute BVSD, and I say again that this should not be happening, happening in BVSD, in our school district. Everyone deserves a right to due process and consideration, everybody here. I want to thank the board for the work you do at BVSD, and I strongly urge you to consider supporting the KE appeal and make sure all families are welcome in our community. Thank you.
Angela Young.
Good evening. My name is Angela, and I have two kids in BVSD. I'm here to support the KE appeal. As a parent who put her children under the temporary care of educators, my expectation is that I approach leaders, or I can approach leaders with honest questions or concerns about the education and care of my children. I support honest respect, or honest respectful and inclusive conversations for adults and for children, and even though sometimes very hard, they have potential to be extremely productive and bring people together. It is expected that leaders will listen to the intent to respond honest, with the intent to respond honestly and respectfully, and it is expected that board members will hold a neutral position, excuse me, value policies and be highly concerned with policy violations. It is not expected that they would agree with all the concerns, but an attempt to give answers in a fairly quick timeline is a sign of respect. Since November, I've observed disheartening responses, or no responses at all, from leaders within BVSD. If the intentions were to be inclusive, respectful, and nondiscriminatory, then why were there portions of policies followed and others not? Does policy only apply when it protects favored groups? If all the policies around any controversial issue were followed, then lawyer involvement probably wouldn't be needed. District policies are set in place for the guidance of all involved, and unequal application of policy is discrimination. If transparency and honesty are guiding values, then why do principals have to get approval from district and district lawyers to answer curriculum questions? Why is it that sometimes they do not respond to curriculum questions at all? And why is it difficult to get answers to questions asked months ago? As a parent, I expect leaders to be inclusive to all students and their families, not conspire against some in the name of inclusion of others. Please vote in favor of this appeal. Thank you.
Erin Young.
Hello. My name is Erin Young. I'm a father of students in BVSD. I am here to support the KE appeal. At the last board meeting, I spoke of BBS, BBSD policy I and B, which gracefully puts forth guidelines for a balanced and objective inquiry into controversial topics. Take a moment to look around this room. Consider the people and the emotions here. This is a controversial issue. It is disingenuous to say otherwise. Through the process, I have come to the conclusion that I actually appreciate these topics being taught to our children. I'll say it, I appreciate it. Our children need to learn to engage in these topics respectfully and with kindness, because they matter deeply to people of all viewpoints. But most of the children were not old enough that day to think critically about the material. The material was not balanced, nor was it objective, and the unfortunate result appears to me much like the indoctrination of one-sided dogma, as opposed to the honest inquiry of a topic that deserves serious attention. Respect our students enough to give them the ability to think critically about what is being proposed. Present them with a balanced and objective inquiry. This is the kind thing to do. Respect students and parents enough to give proper notice to truly opt out if they are motivated by their conscience or their religious persuasions. This is the kind thing to do. And respect parents who offer concerns regarding the administration's mishandling of events with dignity of saying mistakes were made and will try harder next time. This is the kind thing to do. Doing otherwise is incoherent with BVSD's own adopted policies, is hypocritical, dishonest, and intolerant.
Tangi Lancaster.
And please, let's not try to react to, um, in a way that might people, make people feel less welcome here.
On deck, we have Laura Jordan and Lacey Akoweli.
It's been a long time since I was a teenager, and that's whose statement I'm reading, so I'm going to try and read fast, because she wrote a lot. Hi, I'm Tangi Lancaster, and I'm reading the following on behalf of Sammy White, student at Broomfield Heights Middle School. To me, the LGBT community is very important in my school. There is a club called GSA. In this club, we are taught that the LGBT community should be accepted and not criticized in our society. Some people think that just because the people who are a part of the LGBT community are different, that automatically means that they should not be accepted into our society and criticize them for their differences. In my mind, these people should not be criticized because they're different from us. In my mind, I believe that these people should be accepted, and to me, these people are just regular, everyday people trying to live their everyday lives. Some of these people are my best friends, and I treat them like I treat everyone else. I don't care if they're lesbian or gay, I don't care if they're bisexual, I don't care if they're trans, I don't care if they're queer. All that matters to me is that they're nice people and they're normal like all of us. I don't care, or I don't think they should be treated any differently. I don't think we should use stereotypes just because we don't understand. The reason the LGBT community is important to me is because I think it's important to love everyone, no matter their ethnicity, no matter their gender, no matter the religion. And to the people who don't support the LGBT community, and to the people who despise them and think of them as a disgrace to God, they need to realize that God did not make us all the same, and he did this for a reason. The reason being to show diversity between all people. And I very strongly suggest that teachers and counselors and principals and anybody else who knows anything about the LGBT community to share with students, friends, families, and others, that it is very important to treat these people the same, and very strongly suggest that teachers and counselors and principals and anybody else who knows anything about the LGBT community to share with students, friends, family, and others, that it is very important to treat these people the same, and why it's very important to be kind to them like you are to everybody else, and support them in anything like you will support your friends, family, and other people you really care about. And this is why I have gladly chosen to support the LGBT community and to treat all people the same. One sentence, to me, the LGBT community is very important, and I will do anything to convince people to learn and to teach others about the LGBT community. Thank you. Sorry. Am I allowed to speak on my own behalf at another point in time tonight, since this was for the student?
No. No, you just had your two minutes. Sorry.
Well, it wasn't for me, it was for her, so her voice could be heard.
Laura Jordan.
My name is Laura Jordan. I'd like to yield my time to Misha. Hi, my name is Misha Tour. I'm a sophomore at Boulder High School. I remember the first time I heard the word transgender. In seventh grade, through a series of misclicks, I made my way to an article about a transgender woman. It was very tabloid-y, about some actress who was transitioning. But suddenly, it all made sense, the fears, and the persistent feeling that everything was wrong in a way I couldn't describe. Now I had the words. I started sobbing, and I didn't stop for hours. Flash forward to the present, I am sixteen, I am out, and for the first time in my life, I am happy. To me, it is the most scary thing I have ever encountered, that my mere existence in a life that makes me happy is controversial. The fact that people like me exist is not discrimination, nor does it have anything to do with religion. But to tell children like me that our lives are incorrect, or that people disagree with the premise of myself, is incredibly harmful. I- I am so afraid. I am already scared to go to school, mostly due to the ignorance of my peers. I feel this can be remedied only through education because ultimately, people like me deserve a space to exist in this world. To allow students to not receive this education is to deny us that space.
Lacey Akoweli. And on deck, we have BJ Jones and Brecken Jones.
Hi, I am here to support the KE appeal. I read from a few sources that we are an organized anti-LGBTQIA group and this is not the case. We are actually here tonight because we stand for the rights of everyone. Everyone in this room should be treated kindly, equally and fairly. Our beliefs might differ, but we all deserve protection. It is so important to provide to families a neutral and truly inclusive school environment, which is why we went to make sure all parents' views are respected. Your policy states the public school shall neither sponsor nor interfere with religions. In this regard, the school shall be guided by a policy of accommodation. It's unfortunate that the last couple of weeks have been spent seeking legal counsel about policy and gathering opposition rather than genuinely listening and truly accommodating families with beliefs that might be different than yours. Much of the formal complaint went unanswered per the instruction of legal. So my question is this: if you are unable to legally respond, should this not be a red flag for discrimination? Does this feel like a neutral learning environment? Of course, we want all kids to feel welcome and safe. Schools should safeguard all children's values and belief. This is why we are here today. BVSD prides itself on being safe and inclusive, which should apply to all kids in all protected groups. This should mean any discrimination claim would be thoroughly investigated, handled professionally and taken seriously. Tonight, you are voting for the process. Your vote is important and will send a message to all parents and kids in the district. Your vote will show our community how discrimination complaints for any and all protected classes and all protected groups are handled in the future.
BJ Jones.
Hi, I'm here to support the KE appeal. First, I'd like to talk to everyone here about tolerance. And I just wanted to point out this sign behind us here. It says, "No Place For Hate" in BVSD. And I want to say, just because you disagree with someone doesn't mean you should name call them, doesn't mean you should describe their views as hateful. It might just be different than you. And so now I'll go in and tell you what the KE actually says because it's not against any group. In fact, we believe that no matter which class characteristic you are, whether it be your race, your religion, your beliefs, your sexuality, your gender identity, or any other protected trait, you deserve to be treated with fair consideration and due process. In this particular case, the compliance officer, because of the complainant's protected characteristics, chose to ignore not just one, but two deadlines. When he did not answer, he submitted a document that was woefully incomplete, containing partial answers for just four of 13 points in the complaint. The answers that were included lacked reasoning and explanation, simply saying that BVSD policies, quote, "do not apply." During the process, the compliance officer did not even take the time to meet with the affected families to understand their concerns. What if the compliance officer treated your protected group that way? How would you feel if you felt you were being, you know, discriminated against in school and no one even listened? We expect more. Parents deserve real answers to their concerns and students of every protected group, not just some, need a complaint process to properly address their concerns. I urge this board to hold the compliance officer to a higher standard tonight and send a message that every student matters, no matter what their protected class characteristic.
Brecken Jones. On deck, we have Bill Penual and Alan Means.
Call me old fashioned, but I believe in a BVSD that is actually inclusive and tolerant, one that acts with integrity, is neutral, doesn't exhaust parents with their unprofessionalism and doesn't bully into silence those who respectfully disagree. This is exactly why our KE is so important, to protect the minority voices who tonight are those of traditional faiths who believe differently than everyone else in this room. Where there's smoke, there's fire and in this case, there's a raging wildfire that the district is trying to suppress by hiding behind lawyers. When BVSD lawyers draft every single response to us, when Rob tells the board that his lawyer will be answering, when his lawyers then present biased black binders to delay, that's when the board really should investigate. Disgrace Superintendent Messenger snuck a reference form into BVSD to avoid due process. He literally categorized it as a calendar. Yet BVSD and its lawyers are still referring to this fake policy as policy. Where is the transparency? The board really should investigate. BVSD knowingly refused to honor the legal and policy protections afforded to families based on a fake policy. That's horrible. The same fake policy was then used to undermine our complaints. Their report should be thrown out. The board really needs to investigate. Again, is our district so intolerant of us that they won't even give us fair due process? We don't want fake concessions. We want genuine neutrality and tolerance. Call me naive, but I do believe this could exist if the board expects it from the district. Please vote to approve our KE appeal.
Bill Penual.
My name is Bill Penual and I'm a parent of two children in BVSD and I'm here to speak on behalf of A Queer Endeavor, who is not allowed to speak here and I'm joined here at the podium by Bethy Leonardi, co-founder. This is an organization that's worked to support LGBTQ students and staff in our community since 2014 to represent their perspective on both the parent complaint and proposed district policy. BVSD has been a leader in honoring LGBTQ students and staff. Many folks in this room have started that conversation years ago. Through relentless work, they held the district accountable to putting kids and families before politics. AQE has been fortunate to continue supporting the district and becoming a community in which students are free to be and become themselves. I want to share three takeaways from what we've learned. First, at the center of this conversation is student safety, but in order to heal school cultures, we have to move beyond anti-bullying conversations. We must think about what's counted as normal in schools, which is a dangerous silence around LGBTQ identities. When schools perpetuate that silence, they become unsafe and unwelcoming. Breaking the silence involves giving LGBTQ students frameworks to make sense of themselves and supporting all students in understanding the divorce world that we live in. Toward that end, inclusive curriculum is crucial. Second time, often conversations about equity are hidden in talk about issues or topics. The bathroom issue, the immigration issue, the issue of same-sex families. When we stay at the level of issues, we refuse to acknowledge that those issues affect real people. Framing the conversation around the issue of whether LGBTQ inclusive teaching is right or wrong encourages the notion that students' identities and their rights are debatable or worse yet, controversial. Students and families are not controversial. Third, A Queer Endeavor asserts the work of affirming gender, sexual and family diversity is not about beliefs. As public school teachers and leaders, our responsibility is to tell students, not to tell students what to believe or judge belief systems. It is to affirm the identities that exist in our community. We all come with belief systems that are central and yet, no belief system should be allowed to take away the life chances of students in our schools. Thank you.
Alan Means. On deck, we have Emily Lewis and Nicole Burgeland.
My name is Alan Means and I'm a sophomore at CU Boulder. I'm also a graduate of Boulder High School and I'm a trans man who started his social transition while still in school and without the support of my family. And I want to tell you as someone with experience the damaging effect it has on a child for not simply their identity, but their claim on their personhood to be, say, opted out of. This is not about beliefs or politics or religion. This complaint is the kind of discrimination we don't like to talk about. The silent kind, the kind that uses the words, "no, thank you." Unlike the narratives we like to highlight, discrimination doesn't have to be active. It can be the privilege not to engage, to acknowledge. As a trans man, my identity has been treated like a bad word, like I'm a checklist of categories that people can choose to erase or simply uncheck. And because of that, I'm not here to talk about the promotion of gender identity as a philosophy or a cult or a belief because the action of inclusive education is not a promotion of anything. The words promote do not apply here. Ideas about gender identity are not promoted beliefs in education. They are ideas being acknowledged. In high school, if anything saved me from not falling victim to those statistics about trans youth we like to talk about, it wasn't the promotion of ideology. It was the allowance of me as a student, as a person, to exist in a space where my humanity was not optional. The acknowledgement of other human beings that do not conform to a particular religious sentiment is not an attack on anyone. It is not a breach on anyone's right. The acknowledgement of my existence and my experience in a school and in a society that people like me exist in is not wrong and it is not controversial. It is not harming any person, no less any parent or child. Parents can teach what values they want at home. They can talk to their children after their history classes and tell them their thoughts in the matter. That's okay, but no one has a right to say they do not believe in that history or those
Emily Lewis. Nicole Burgeland. On deck, we have Anna Seeger and Jude C.
Hello. Dear board members, my name is Nicole Burgeland and I'm here in support of the KE appeal. My husband was born in Boulder and attended K through 12 in Louisville and because he greatly valued the great education he got, we chose to stay in Boulder to raise our two kids in this great county. We have found that standards are high, but teachers are patient and compassionate. Overall and to date, Boulder Valley schools have a strong and positive reputation. Natives want to live here and out-of-state movers seek houses in this area. This is for good reason. In the two years attending local elementary, we have experienced faculty that truly care about kids and a community that rallies to support the school, its activities and one another. I have loved being involved in the classroom, helping out the teachers, providing meals during conference time, getting to know students and parents of various backgrounds and beliefs. I say this to paint a picture of partnership. I believe schools and districts operate best when parents and educators work together in a trusting relationship. Sadly, the recent events tell a different story. Board members, the reputation of this district is on the line. No matter if you agree with this actual complaint or not, the point remains that people in our community are not being heard. In fact, they're being dismissed, ignored and overlooked. Community members, I urge you to stand up for all people, ensuring all viewpoints are heard and respected. Board members, the original complaint has been mishandled and not given the appropriate attention it deserves. I urge you to consider the reputation of our schools. Please be a board that sees value in partnering with parents, a board that promotes equality, diversity and fair treatment of all. Please vote yes to honor fair due process. Thank you.
Anna Seeger.
Hello, I'm here to talk about technology. Today, I want to talk about YouTube and Google Chromebooks. As I said last time, the primary motivation that Google has to get their Chromebooks in the classroom is to collect data and on students and they're also acquiring a large segment of new, young, impressionable customers that they can groom to use Google products and collapse massive amounts of data about the online behavior of this market segment. YouTube is one of the Google products that students are using in BVSD. It comes pre-configured on the BVSD Chromebooks with a quick launch button at the bottom of the screen, which almost encourages students to use it. Contrary to the district's claims, you might find educational videos on YouTube, but YouTube is not an educational platform. It's a platform designed to capture the user's attention for as long as possible to maximize exposure to the embedded ads that appear in the videos and maximize Google's advertising revenue. YouTube does this by using an algorithm to create a list of suggestive videos that encourage users to watch one after another and play these, autoplay these videos. Andrew Moore, last meeting, said that all videos that appear in BVSD are approved by YouTube, but that means that an algorithm suggests them, not that a human actually views it and decides it's appropriate. So I'd like to highlight the news reports that have surfaced about inappropriate content being included in the YouTube Kids channel that happens as a result when you have bots deciding what content is appropriate for kids versus actual human beings. So I'd like to ask the district to use the same standards for digital media that they're using for print media in the classrooms and have a human being review everything rather than having an algorithm or a bot. Thank you.
Jude C.
Hello, board members. I'm a 13-year-old transgender girl. I started my journey when I was nine years old. I told my sister and mom that I felt more like a girl than a boy. I told my classmates I was transgender after my teacher read the book, I Am Jazz, to the class. I raised my hand and said that I could relate to this book because I'm transgender like jazz. I still remember the relief when all the kids thought that it was cool. That day empowered me to live as my true, authentic self and it also improved my self-confidence. We moved to Boulder, specifically BVSD, because my family knew that I could not receive the right education and social acceptance where we lived at the time. My family wanted me to have the best opportunity to have a successful transition, just like many other families who live in the Boulder area. Since starting school in BVSD, I've made a lot of friends. My friends come from all walks of life and accept me for who I am. We are all different races and come from different religious backgrounds. I do not expect all people to like or accept me, however, they are not allowed to bully me and deny me of my own rights. Yesterday, our first piece of transgender legislature passed in Colorado. I've been testifying for this bill for four years now with my mom, who has supported me throughout my whole journey. We need to be taking after our government in this case and embrace the existence of the transgender community. I'm here today to ask you to please not make concessions to people who do not like transgender people. They are allowed to not like us, however, they're not allowed to change policies that would stigmatize my transgender community or make us vulnerable in social situations. Please continue to be the BVSD I know and love. We have a hard enough time when we are outside of school. We want and need to feel safe in school without judgment.
Jenna Clinchard.
Hi, board. Thanks for having me tonight. I guess just from listening, I want to start out and say that my child is not a controversial topic and transgender people are not a controversial topic. No children are controversial topics. All children are human beings, every single one of them. And I want to thank the kiddos that all spoke tonight and I had stuff written out, but I realized I can't talk about that. What I need to talk about is education and how these kids keep saying this is happening because we don't have enough education around the LGBTQ community. And I believe we're here today because BVSD, this board, the superintendent, we have phenomenal policies for transgender and the LGBTQ youth. Here's what we don't have. We are not training our staffs. We are not implementing, we're not implementing the policies. We have the policies, but we're not implementing them. We, BVSD needs to educate each and every adult staff person working for them about the LGBTQ community, especially the transgender community. Kiddos are being bullied out of schools because their principals, teachers and counselors are not getting the training and support they need from the district. I'm here today to ask you to do better and be better. Policies are terrific, however, without action and accountability behind these policies, you will continue to receive these complaints until we make a systemic change. This needs to be done. We need to help these teachers, these principals, these counselors. We need to teach them what the LGBT community is, who they are, who these kids are. Because I'll tell you what, if this principal and the people at this school knew how to talk to these families, these families wouldn't, I guarantee you, we wouldn't be here today. They wouldn't feel the way they feel. Help your educators get educated on LGBTQ, please.
Okay, so that's an hour and we're going to cut it off. Okay, so that's an hour and we're going to cut it off here. I'm sorry, it's so hard. I'm sorry, we said an hour. So, thank you for coming. So what we're going to do now, board members, do you need a break? We need a break. So we're going to take a, I think, just given the capacity, a ten-minute break, okay? Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Okay, we'd like to resume our meeting, regular Board of Education meeting. If everyone could start going back to your place. I would have said seats, but I know not everyone has a seat. We're sorry about that. Okay, let's try to start our meeting. Okay. So just a couple notes. Remember that if you did not get to speak in the first hour, you can speak at the end of the meeting when we've resumed, ended our meeting. However, the item that many of you are speaking about is up to be voted on prior to that. So that's just one unfortunate part of how this works when you have such an extraordinary amount of speakers. The other thing is some people ask, do you have time right now to go get dinner and come back? I, I don't know. It's difficult. Just because, no, I don't think we should have pizzas ordered. So, because we have a couple items to discuss and, so I can't make any, I can't give you an idea of what the exact timeline is, okay? So, so the next item on our agenda is board communication. And who would like to start? Richard.
Well, I want to thank everybody that was here tonight, both for and against the issue on hand. So thank you very much. I also want to give a big shout-out to Impact on Education. I attended their Classroom Innovation Grant presentation yes, today? Yeah. And it was wonderful to see all of the presentations. But what, but what really caught my eye on all of the presentations is that some of them had children there that were presenting. And the projects were all full of fun and learning, which is wonderful, because that's what it should be in terms of educating our kids. It ought to be fun and it ought to be learning. So, Impact on Education granted almost thirty thousand dollars to many schools in the district, you know, including the charter schools and including Boulder Prep. The bilingual schools were represented there. So I just want to do, do a big shout-out to Allison, you know, so that's it.
Okay, who'd like to go next? Donna.
Richard, I love the Impact Grants. Because I, and to the rest of you that don't know about it, these grants are awarded to teachers that write these grants. And having worked for the district for years and years, my, my group and my staff worked at writing grants and our students got to present some wonderful grants about going out into the community and working in the community. And these grants just helped us survive and thrive during the, the tough years that our district went through when kids weren't being hired and our employment rate was not so advantageous as it is now. We could not get businesses to hire students. But with the grants, we were able to be able to have those students go out and work in various places in the community. Thank you.
Okay, who'd like to go next?
Just, just let me say, Tina, that there were thirty grants that were doled out, thirty of them. And they all ranged from the 3D printers, you know, where teachers were able to purchase 3D printers to, I even learned how to make a phonograph, a record player, you know, because that's what one of the kids did. They were studying sound and they made a record player. And then the Gold Hill Elementary School was also given a grant. And I learned how to compost, you know, so, so it was just wonderful. It was just great.
You haven't been composting?
I have, but I didn't know that you had to put worms in it.
All right, who'd like to speak next? Comments, board members?
I want to thank everybody, everybody, for coming out tonight, but particularly the students. You know, I'm always informed, always appreciative. You show up, you're articulate, you're brave, you stick up for yourself, you stick up for your friends. Come anytime, we do appreciate hearing from the students. Thank you.
Yeah, like everyone else, I want to thank everyone who came out tonight. It's a, it's a clear indication of how much our community cares. And I think that's important. And especially the students, I echo what Sam said. I always love hearing for the kids, from the kids, even if I can't see them over the top of the lectern. It's just great to have kids who are confident enough to come out here and talk to us. The other thing I wanted to talk about was the Equity Summit, which we had last week. And I was not able to go to the second one, but at this one, a woman at our table said something that I found quite intriguing and I mentioned it to Dr. Anderson. And that was, if we want to be truly equitable, we need to remove white supremacy from our curriculum. And I think that is a great idea. And another woman at our table knows how to do it. So I just sent her contact information to Dr. Anderson. But I think that's something the board should talk about and consider doing.
I also want to thank everyone for coming, the kids for coming, the parents for coming. I want to thank everyone for all your emails and your support and your passion for education and for all of our students in BVSD. And I just want to say that personally, I agree that no matter what child is here, that no child is a controversial issue. And I'm really thankful that you're all here. Two quick shout-outs. I went to the, I went to part of the middle school presentation with the middle school principals. And like you, Richard, who was, you were there and Tina, it was just great to see the passion of our young students and their thoughtful presentations and the great work that they did. And it continues to give us hope that, that we will be going into the future in good hands. And then a quick shout-out, I don't see him here, to Andrew Moore for the award, the national award he got for the, the good work that he's done on some of the technology issues. I understand it came with a small grant, and so I just wanted to say congratulations to Andrew for that. And again, I just want to say thank you, everyone, for being here. We really appreciate you taking the time and sharing your views with us because it's really one of the best ways we find out how our community is feeling and what the issues and the pulses are out there. So thank you.
Okay, and I'll just echo all of that and just how impressed I am with all the words that were shared today and how proud I am that we've cultivated an environment where people feel free to express themselves and be who they are. And it is, it's such an interesting thing for me when I reflect back to my childhood. I don't believe I had any idea what a transgender child was or, or had I ever met someone who is transgender? And how lovely it is that we have a culture of openness and freedom of speech and freedom of being. I also wanted to bring up that I enjoyed the middle school and high school presentations. And just a note that I asked Rob to share the presentations with all of us, because I know that not everybody could make it. And I know how all of the board members like hearing from the students. I also, I wanted to thank Rob for being one of the signers of the op-ed in the Colorado Sun. The Our Schools, Our Community. I thought that was a really nice article that was shared throughout the state. And then two just business items, which I should have mentioned before. The first is that our school board meetings are moving to Superior for the month of June. So, and that is because we're demolishing this room. And then we'll be building a new school board room and that will be available around the end of August. So for those of you who are staying engaged, just know that you won't be coming here in the month of June. The other thing is that we have school board elections coming up in November. And we are holding meetings for people who are interested in being a part of the policy team of Boulder Valley School District. So our next meeting is April twenty-seventh at ten AM. You can come and learn about the process for being on the school board. And then we have another one on May sixth at six-thirty PM. So really, it's been great to, to be at, we had our first meeting, it was wonderful. So I hope if you want to be on school board and participate the way we are here, or if you know someone that would like to do that, that's a great venue to learn more. All right, so then our next item is our legislative update. Our lobbyist, Ernestine, is here. And you ready to go?
Yeah.
So she's going to let us know what's going on down at the Capitol. Today was actually a really busy day, from what I understand.
It was. Well, thank you for having me here today. As you mentioned, it's been a whirlwind down at the Capitol as the legislature finishes up the last couple weeks of the 2019 legislative session. The House and Senate are still working through the night on a number of issues that we care about. So my partner in crime, Tanya, is down there covering, while I cover the school board meeting. So this was a little bit of an unusual legislative session in that this year, we had five bills that were involved in the process of funding our education system. The first of those was Senate Bill 207, and this is the annual state budget bill. This is constitutionally required by the legislature to pass each year. And it sets base funding for K-12 education. That bill was signed by the governor last week and is now law. In addition, we have Senate Bill 246, which is the Public School Finance Act. This also is an annual appropriation for K-12 education and funds all one hundred and seventy-eight school districts across the state. And in this year's School Finance Act, it reduces the BS factor, the budget stabilization factor, by a hundred million dollars. I know, that's always funny. It appropriates twenty million for rural schools. And then this morning in the Senate, the, they put an amendment on the bill that would require the rural schools to have some accountability around that twenty million dollars and sort of report out to the General Assembly how that money will be spent. And then additionally, today, they added twenty-two million for Tier B special ed programs. And this was something they were kind of holding off until the end. And with the residential assessment rate dropping, there was some more money that they found last week that they were able to appropriate for school finance. So that was a really big win this morning. So the bill needs to finish a final vote in the Senate tomorrow and then go through the House next, well, this week and next week before it's finalized. And, you know, that bill could potentially see some more changes. So we'll sort of keep you posted on, on the School Finance Act going forward. Additionally, we have House Bill 1262. This is the state funding for full-day kindergarten. The Senate took up the bill and appropriations this morning. They did pass it. The Senate is kind of jammed up with bills and actually worked all day on the floor and they just never got to it today. So it needs two more votes in the Senate and then it'll go on to the governor. And this bill has a hundred and fifty million needed for the first year of full-day K implementation for school districts. And then lastly, we have House Bill 1055. This is the Public School Capital Construction Financial Assistance Bill. This bill appropriates twenty-five million for the implementation of full-day kindergarten, which our board member Kathy was instrumental in helping to negotiate with the governor's office. And it also appropriates money for bus grants going forward. Any questions on budget bills?
There'd been five million dollars in school finance for mental health. Then they said they were going to find that somewhere in couch cushions or somewhere else. Do you know if they have been able to find additional money for mental health? Or where that stands?
So they have not put it back in, in the Senate. But there is a bill being dropped tonight or tomorrow. The governor is having a press conference tomorrow to announce a big initiative to raise the tobacco tax by, I believe, a buck seventy-five. And a hundred and sixty-seven million of that will go to healthcare and behavioral health. And another hundred and sixty-seven million of that will go to pay for universal preschool. So for the Colorado preschool program. And so I'm not entirely clear if that's kind of how we're getting around paying for that behavioral health component of school finance, but that is expected to, to drop tonight.
Does he want that to be a referred measure? Is that what he's?
Yes, it would be a referred measure.
And is there a vaping tax in there too?
Yes. Yes.
Was there, in order to balance the budget, was there forty million, am I correct, moved from reserve?
So they used forty million from the state employee reserves to pay for transportation. So there were several transfers that they used to pay for the three-hundred-million transfer for transportation. Those bills have not been introduced yet. The Joint Budget Committee will discuss those transfer bills tomorrow. And so they're still forthcoming. There's some negotiations going on behind the scenes on the transportation bill and what that will look like. But yes, they did cut a number of programs to balance the budget, including CDOT's own budget to pay for transportation.
Just a quick question. There's that hangover bill from last year that if neither of the transportation bills passed at the ballot, that there was going to be a transportation measure on this year's ballot? And I think that's in limbo. Is that still in limbo?
Yeah, and I think, I believe that's part of the negotiations on the transportation bill, whether or not they pull that referred measure going forward, because they have the three-hundred million. And so I think they're just, the negotiations are sort of happening on that one issue.
And the debruising bill?
So the two debruising bills are up in Senate finance tonight. Tanya is there covering those bills. They're, they went to committee just a couple minutes ago. In the Senate, we, it doesn't, it's not looking like they're going to have bipartisan support. Senator Kevin Priola, he's a Republican from Adams County. He is on the bill and he will be likely the lone Republican supporter on that bill in the Senate. But they, it does look like they do have the votes to get it out of the Senate. So Tanya is actively monitoring and working that bill, those two bills, tonight. So there's still sort of a lot in play on the budget, as you can see. And then we'll sort of give you more information tomorrow as the governor's proposal for universal preschool unveils. Keep you posted on that. And then la, oh, I forgot one more. So Senate Bill 255, this is the Gallagher Amendment Residential Assessment Rate Bill. This is the one that drops the residential assessment rate and frees up that hundred and seven million, which is paying for some of the additional buy-down of the negative factor. That bill is also in committee tonight. So we'll keep you posted on that one as well. And then lastly, wanted to cover a couple pieces of legislation that are still in play. So House Bill 1134, this is the dyslexia bill. This was run by Representative Buckner in the House. It's now in the Senate. It will be in the Education Committee tomorrow, or maybe Thursday. And this bill is the bill that sets up a task force to study dyslexia and put together some recommendations for the General Assembly to consider. And then additionally, it sets up a pilot program for five districts to sort of take the recommendations from the task force and sort of implement them in, in their districts once those are put in place.
How will they determine who the pilot schools are or pilot districts?
So just looking through the bill, it looks like they're trying to do a sort of a diverse districts across like all spectrums. So maybe like a rural district, a front range. It looks like they're kind of covering all areas of the state. But it didn't sort of go into great detail about how those districts will be picked, just that it would be optional for districts to apply to be one of those pilot districts. And that, those pilots wouldn't occur till 2021, so a couple years out.
And do you have any update on what happened with the REED Act?
Sure. So this morning, the REED Act was on the Senate floor, second reading. They have, they kind of did a strike below in Senate Education on the bill. So it does a number of different things. It's a really lengthy, weedy bill. But it sets up sort of protocol for what districts have to do when a kid falls below grade level in reading. And then when a child has a significant reading disorder, it has a sort of protocol for that. It also has a public awareness campaign and an independent evaluator to sort of evaluate what the state is doing and what districts are doing. It sets up a whole sort of criteria of different things that that independent evaluator must do and must cover and report back. must do and must cover and report back to the state on those issues. It also has, the State Board of Education will have to do some rulemaking around timeframes, reading assessments, and then they'll have to put together an advisory list of evidence-based programming in reading. So, it's very weedy, but if you have specific questions, I can try to answer.
Are they increasing funding to support all of that? Or is it staying at the current funding?
It's staying at $40 million.
Yeah.
And then, there's the Literacy Grant Act, which is, I think, $1.5 million. So, it's the same.
Good. Any other legislative questions? Richard?
We heard from one of the speakers a while ago that 1032, is it 1032, the Comfort Hand Sex Ed Bill was passed?
So, that is still awaiting a Senate second reading vote. It's kind of buried on the second reading calendar as the Senate has really struggled this week and in weeks past to get through their calendar. It's looking like they're probably gonna have to work through the weekend to get through it. There's well over 250 bills still in play in both the House and Senate that they have to finish by May 3rd. So, it could come up any time. It just hasn't, it's been stuck on the calendar for a while.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question related to that? If they work through the weekend, can we go down to the House on the weekend? It's open and?
Sure.
Bring our families up?
Absolutely, yeah. And I'm happy to let you know if they decide to do that. Majority Leader Fenberg did announce tonight that they'll likely have to work this weekend.
I'd love to know, if you could email the board. Thank you.
Sure, absolutely.
So, maybe, these are obscure bills, so if you don't know, it's fine. The modification to 191 that Senator Story was trying to get through, do you know what the status is of that?
Yes, so, that was heard in Senate Ed last week, the day that School Finance was being heard. They did not take a vote on it. And I haven't seen it pop up back on the calendar. And I believe, I'm not actually clear entirely on the path forward on that bill, if they have the votes to get it out of committee.
It's been watered down a lot. It's to try to change the percentage that tests are supposed to be used for teacher accountability. And it's been watered down to now just do a commission to look at the impact of 191, which is supposed to have already been happening, but apparently hasn't been happening.
Yeah.
So, it's been watered down a fair amount, and it'll be interesting to see if it gets through.
So, it takes out the teacher evaluation component of the original bill draft, and then it drops the student assessment thing to, from 50 to 30 percent?
Thirty to 50, a range, yeah.
Thirty to 50.
You're awesome.
Oh, thank you.
You don't even have to look down at your notes. So, I'm totally impressed.
Thank you.
Two more quick questions, Ernestine. The alternative accountability bill, that made it out of Senate Ed. Do you know where it is?
It was on the Senate calendar today. I don't know if they got to it tonight when I was driving over here, but it is on the calendar.
What's wrong?
So, in case you haven't heard, there's been some shenanigans on the Senate floor. And so, they're really struggling to get through the calendar. Took them a whole day to get through second reading today.
And then, my, one of my favorite bills, and I haven't been following it, is 1184. And maybe, that's the one that allows the legislature to look at the socio-demographic impacts of certain bills, which I think could be really interesting on some of the education bills. So, I'm hoping that that one makes it through at some point.
Yeah, I heard the Appropriations Committee debate on that. That's Senator Foote's bill, right? Or is that, I mean, maybe I'm thinking of someone?
Harretts' bill.
Okay, yeah.
Sam?
Back of the bill that was adding different groups to civics curriculum. Asian-Americans, LDBTQ, Jewish people. What happened with that?
That one's also on the Senate calendar.
Okay.
But, almost done. Once the Senate votes on all of these bills, they're done. Because it's just, they're all, yeah, they've all been through the House, yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Alright, we'll be looking forward to the final recap.
Sure, thank you, guys.
Thanks for coming.
Have a good night.
Alright, so, our next item is 6.2, JSR, Student Use of District Technology, the Internet and Electronic Communication. And I see Sam Messier coming here. Do you wanna set it up for us, or?
Sure, thank you.
Thanks.
So, good evening, everybody. So, tonight, we're bringing a regulation to you, JSR. The reasoning behind this is that we want to take a little bit more time to work on the actual policy, JS. We'd really like to invest the time to make sure that we get that wording right, so that we really capture the intent of the district accurately. In the meantime, there are some rules regarding student use of technology that pertain to security. And we're seeking to move some of that language into JSR. Some of the, an example of that would be banning the use of USB drives, which present a risk of viruses or other malware infecting our systems. So, these parallel the same regulations that we put in place for staff earlier this year. So, given all of the attention that's been on these policies, I just wanted to seek the board's guidance on whether there's anything that we've moved into the regulation that you would like us to move back into policy for further discussion.
Okay, board members, any initial comments? It's always a little interesting to look at the regulation without the policy, but it's okay. But, I understand why you're doing that. Anyone have comments?
For staff?
Oh, we don't?
Yeah, so, we, that was in one of the G policies, which regulates use of technology and the internet by staff members. And you're correct, we did include that in that policy and regulation. This would be for students.
Sam, I just have a question about the acceptable use agreement.
Mm-hmm.
We had some concern expressed earlier about that, and I'm wondering, you know, how you feel about that concern, whether you think that's legitimate, that people are having to sign the agreement before they actually know, you know, what they're signing up for and who's getting student data and all of that. Do you feel like this is enough of a safeguard for that issue?
So, the acceptable use agreement, parents do have to sign that before their students can have access to district technology. So, before a student can have access to a district account, or before they can have access to any hardware or technology that's owned by the district. So, currently, we have not proposed any modifications to the current acceptable use agreement. But, if the board feels like they'd want more discussion on that, we can certainly move that out of regulation and put that back in policy.
I think that would be the one thing in this whole policy.
Of course.
Yeah.
Anything else? This is just an information item, so, we're going to see it again. Anyone? No? Alright, well, I guess that's it.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so, the next item is 6.3, a sustainability update.
Good evening. I'm Keita Carroll. I'm the Sustainability Coordinator for the school district. I'm here with my colleague Jeff Medwitz. He's the Energy Manager, and we're delighted to be here to give you an update on sustainability and energy, especially on Earth Week. So, thank you for having us, even though we know every day is Earth Day here at BVSD, of course. Alright, awesome. So, as a reminder, the district created its first sustainability plan in 2009 with updates in 2012 and 2015, and we will be updating this plan next year. The Sustainability Management System outlines visions, goals, and strategies for incorporating sustainability into our operations and curriculum, and supported by Board Policy ECF. And what this document does is help acknowledge the efforts that we have in this area, helps us coordinate as an organizational system, gives us meaningful measure and goals, and helps us to align and partner with local agencies around sustainability. So, the categories covered in our sustainability plan are buildings, materials, transportation, and education, with overarching themes of health and climate. So, I'm gonna give you some examples and highlights of some of the work that we're doing, both in our bond program and then district-wide in some of, in these categories. So, under buildings, we have Green Building Guiding Principles, which provide an overview of relevant areas in the Sustainability Management System and our bond and construction program. So, for example, we've set a goal that all of our new facilities will be designed to meet 2009 LEED for-school standard. And all four schools that we opened last fall did actually meet that requirement. Additionally, all of the work that we're doing in construction, we're asking projects to maximize lead points for indoor environmental quality and energy efficiency, with Jeff will talk a little bit more. We're also emphasizing access to the outdoors and natural daylighting, and supporting healthy learning environments. So, pictures that you see here, this is Douglas Elementary on the left, and you can see the access to daylighting, and those are solar tubes, the little squares on top that looks like light, that that's also solar lighting coming in. The picture on the upper right is a truth wall at Emerald Elementary, so students can see actually what's behind the walls. And then, the bottom is an outdoor learning space at LMS, Lewisville Middle School, and we have outdoor learning spaces at quite a few of our schools. Now, this is one example. For water, for the bond and district-wide, we're encouraging water reduction measures where relevant. So, that's including a move towards more efficient fixtures when we're updating restrooms, more efficient outdoor landscaping, and synthetic fields. So, what this shows is last year's data compared to the year before, and we are seeing a 3% decrease. We expect that, we planted a lot of grass in the new bond program, especially with the new schools. So, we expect once that's established, that we'll see even more of a water decrease. The district is committed to reducing waste and best zero-waste practices, both in our bond and at our schools. So, our metric for tracking waste is a waste aversion rate, which we use for each of our construction projects. And we now have a waste aversion rate for each of our schools. That's new. So, that's the amount diverted from the landfill through recycling, repurposing, and composting, divided by the total waste leaving the campus. So, all of our schools have recycling, and more than two-thirds of our schools now have composting as part of our Green Star program in partnership with EcoCycle. And our newest Green Star schools are Fairview High School and Centaurus High School. So, those are our first big high schools to have composting. And it's not with worms, I have to add. It's a curbside pickup, the worms is one way to do it. That's not how we're doing it at the schools. So, through this partnership with EcoCycle, we work with thousands of students each year. So, just a couple examples of programs that students help with. It was a student group that oversaw the launch of a Green Star school at Fairview, so they came up with the messaging. They did all the announcements in their classrooms and really rolled it out in a way that made sense for that school. Students in Broomfield High School and the elementary schools there are doing active waste audits and trying to figure out best placement for their waste stations are involved in that way. And I worked really closely with a student from Boulder High School this, the entire year, who did a really in-depth study on recycling habits of high schoolers, which is really, you know, it's a unique audience. And he came up with some great research, and now they're incorporating that into their freshman 101 class. So, it's awesome for him, and it's something that will continue. So, we love that kind of work. Currently, on average, for construction, our waste aversion rate is about 51%. And currently, the average for schools is 53%. So, just as a comparison statewide, it's usually, it's 10 to 20%. So, we're doing really great in our construction program and our schools around waste aversion. So, the pictures here, upper right, are the Jamestown Elementary School celebrating their fifth year of being a Green Star school, and then some of our indoor and outdoor waste collection facilities. For transportation, we've added electric vehicle charging stations at 32 of our schools through the bond, and we've received grant money to support that. So, we've received almost $200,000 of grant money to install those. Non-bond-related, we do have our trip tracker program that rewards students for taking sustainable modes of transportation. We've got 23 schools participating in that this year. More, about 4,500 students have logged almost 2 million miles of either biking, or carpooling, or busing to school. So, that's pretty awesome. It's also Bike and Walk to School Week this week. So, hopefully, you'll see extra bikers and walkers out there this week for Earth Week. In the bond, all of our projects support our educational mission by striving to incorporate teachable moments. So, that's the truth wall at Emerald is a teachable moment. We also work with green teams and involve them in the construction work where we can, bring them into meetings, and teach them about the energy-efficient and sustainable features. We've also, the outdoor learning spaces are another way that we're supporting that in the bond. District-wide, we have dozens of programs and partners that help support student engagement. So, we create green teams through our work in the Shared Savings Program that Jeff will talk a little bit more about. There's a whole, an e-movement of collaborators, including the county, and Thorn, and EcoCycle, and dozens of others that support curriculum and teachers and provide a framework for our schools. One example of a project that we just wrapped up is our Greensuits Project, where we had six of our secondary schools, art classes, take pictures of sustainability in action. So, I went and worked with the art teachers and talked to the students about the types of projects that we have, and they went out and took pictures, wearing this green suit as a way to positively highlight this. And this was a partnership with CU, NCAR, and EcoArts. And so, the display, the, will be up at UCAR through the summer. So, I encourage you to go check it out, really awesome photos as part of that project. And just to let you know, the BVSD continues to be recognized as a leader in this work. So, we are consistently getting calls. I was just on the phone with a New Jersey school district about what we're doing, the work we're doing sustainability. So, it's something that hopefully, you're all proud of, and we continue to be recognized in that way. And for my last slide, just as a reminder, we do have 29 sites with solar panels at our school district, two sites with wind turbines, and two sites with geothermal. And for all of the installs, we incorporate learning opportunities, and we have live data that the students can use in curriculum. The top-right picture was the day we installed the wind turbine at Nutterland Middle Senior, and we had the middle students out there actually holding the wind turbine. Last spring, we did put out an RFP to look at installing more solar at our new sites, and decided that financially, it didn't make sense, but it's something that we continue to evaluate. So, I'll hand it over to Jeff.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Medwitz, the Project Manager of Energy Systems. And before I can discuss our progress with energy, I need to define for you the term that we use as a metric by which we determine success. And that's energy use intensity, also known as EUI. And it's basically the annual energy used in a building divided by the square footage of that building, and it's then shown as 1,000 BTUs per square foot per year. And I liken it to the MPG for buildings. It describes efficiency. But, unlike miles per gallon, the lower the EUI, the more efficient the building. The district's current portfolio average is a 61 EUI. That's just slightly higher than the US K-12 median. And overlaid here in orange are goals and our energy plan, which is incorporated into the updated SMS, of which Keita spoke, lists our short-term goal as a 20% reduction from our 2008 baseline, and that equals a 55 EUI. And then, our aggressive long-term goal is, challenges us to become a zero-net-energy-capable school district by the year 2050. Generally, an EUI of 30 or less is considered zero-net-energy-capable. And this just means that the EUIs are low enough that we can add renewables economically to offset our energy used from the grid. And now, some results for the bond. Comparing pre-bond to last fiscal year, we've reduced our portfolio EUI average approximately 14 points, and that's very significant and exciting. And we'll be close to meeting our short-term goal. And then, I want to mention that because of these results, we've received over $500,000 in rebates from Excel Energy for this work. So, how have we accomplished this in the bond? I'd like to give three examples, three ideas. First of all, is it's our efficiency goals. So, depending on the type of bond project, efficiency improvement goals range from 20 to 50%. And of all the completed projects for which we have a year's worth of data, you can see on this chart, blue showing pre-bond energy use and orange showing post-bond energy use. You can see, we've improved efficiency by an average of 33%. That's pretty significant. We've also vetted our mechanical systems in our buildings. So, instead of solely looking at first cost to determine our heating, ventilating, and air conditioning systems, we've also evaluated factors such as energy usage, indoor environmental quality, and payback. And finally, we've commissioned our mechanical systems. And so, we've hired commissioning agents for all of our projects, and these agents ensure that the contractors have installed our mechanical systems correctly and that they are calibrated correctly. And this all helps to save energy and ensure that there's occupant comfort. Now, very quickly, I'd like to highlight just two successful examples. One is Broomfield Heights Middle School, and it was a deep energy retrofit where we changed the entire mechanical system and looked at the design holistically. And here, despite adding air conditioning to that building, energy use was reduced forty-eight percent. Indoor environmental quality was improved and maintenance work orders basically disappeared. And secondly, I'd like to highlight the transportation center that just recently opened. So a typical code compliant facility, a similar facility, um, would have an EUI of approximately a hundred and five. And that's significant because of, you, you're working in, in that type of environment with, uh, with, with buses, you need a lot of air changes. But with thoughtful and deliberate design, instead of a hundred and five, our facility is predicted to run with an EUI of forty-five. That's a, that's an improvement of about fifty-seven percent, and that's because of our energy goals. This last, uh, chart that I'm showing you displays the percentage of change from the base year of two thousand eight for several factors. So, so zero percent equals two thousand eight, basically. The increase in pupil count over this, uh, over the years of ten years from two thousand eight is shown in blue. And the increase in building area, square footage in the district is in orange. And overlaid in yellow is our energy use within that, in, within the district. So despite us increasing, um, nearly ten percent of, uh, square footage and about twelve percent of, um, student population, our energy usage in two thousand eighteen is just about one percent above two thousand eight. So what this shows is that our, our energy plan and its implementation in the bond is being successful. And it's helped us avoid unnecessary expenditures for wasted energy. But besides efficient building design and construction, uh, the last piece of the energy efficiency puzzle for our district is occupant engagement. And we use our real-time online energy dashboard to show electricity use for most of our buildings. And this is to encourage occupant, um, behavior, change in behavior. The shared savings program uses this dashboard to have schools compete against themselves to save energy. They do this by tracking and comparing last year's, the, the previous year's energy, electricity use to the current year's electricity use. And it allows them to earn a reward from their electricity bill savings if they save more than five percent. So this is an incentive, this is incentivizing, um, this change in behavior. And the photo at the right shows Crestview Elementary's Energy Elves, one of the many clubs across the district who try to reduce energy. And, and these, these green teams are required as part of our shared savings program. And with that, Gita and I thank you for your time and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, board members? Sam?
Uh, first, uh, thank you, Gita and Jeff, for all your work on, on behalf of the district and it's, it's really good news. I didn't understand the, the water use graph back at the beginning, cause, cause it seemed like twenty eighteen was going up. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, um...
Am I just reading that wrong?
It's, nope, the summer usage did go up and we think it's because we had, that had so much new grass at those schools. So what we're expecting is it will come down. So we'll have to report back to you, but I, that's why it was higher last summer.
And then this is more of a question from an RFI I did a couple of months ago. But to, to get to a hundred percent renewable electricity in the district, I think that was, um, we didn't have enough space, even if we could find the money to do that onsite, is that correct?
Well, there's several different ways to support renewables. So, um, onsite renewables requires either space in the roof or on our properties. So, um, I think it's probably unlikely that we could get to a hundred percent onsite, but we could, there's certainly room for a lot more than we have currently. There's, um, also called solar gardens, which are solar, large groups of panels that may be in your community or nearby that you can kind of buy into as a way of offsetting your electricity use. So that's something we're con, kind of continuing to evaluate. It hasn't made financial sense yet, but it's what we look at. And then renewable energy certificates are another way of supporting renewables. Um, and we did that at Casey Middle School and it first opened for two years. And you're basically offsetting the electricity use for the school by purchasing, um, electricity from renewables. And so it's not onsite, it's, it's more of a economic transaction, but it's a way of supporting renewables.
Yeah. And I think that the figure in the RFI was thirty-five million to get to a hundred percent.
If we were going to build onsite.
Oh, for onsite only, okay.
Is that right? You've got that? Yes, yeah.
Well, I won't be on the board then, but for the next bond, I would encourage, uh, board members in the community to think about, about that, about getting us all the way. But thank you. This is great progress. Appreciate your work.
Thank you.
Hey, Donna?
Just a quick que, a quick question on, um, with the schools that are getting air conditioning, that, that we're putting that into, do you expect the, is it you, EUI? To go up, or have you already dealt with compensating for that?
What we're trying to do, let's see if I can find the right slide for you. So, um, it may be hard to see on, on this chart. Uh, but what we're trying to do is install air conditioning the right way. There's, the wrong way is just to throw it on, onto the building. But we're trying to, to, um, integrate, use integrative design as the method to do it the right way. At Broomfield Heights, I think it's our poster child for the correct way to do it, where we looked at the whole building holistically and, and were able to, to reduce, uh, the use by, by half, even while adding air conditioning. Some of these, uh, it, it probably is very hard to see, um, but, uh, on, on, uh, a, after some of the titles of the schools, there's a double plus sign. Those are the, the schools that, at which we added air conditioning. And, um, it's where we were able to do deep energy retrofits on, on some of these. We really reduced and, and, uh, the worst case is we stayed the same. So, so, um, we're, we're working hard at trying to do it the right way so that we're setting ourselves up to meet our goals.
Part of that also is making sure operationally that we're not running it when we don't have to be. And that, um, once we have buildings at temperatures that feel good, that we don't have all the individual space heaters and coolers and fans that add to the energy as well.
On the eco pass for transportation, I know that RTD changed its policy to allow, um, more passes for low-income youth. Do you know how that's going in Boulder?
I don't know the answer up hand.
I'd send an RFI, maybe I'll send a updated RFI on that.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Katie or Richard? I, I just had a quick question. I read about a company called TerraCycle that's going into the recycling of unique products. And one of the products was a GoGoSqueeze applesauce kind of thing. Are we working with them at all, or is it too new, or what? No, it's a pouch, Sam. It's a...
A lot of our schools work with them directly, so it's not something we have a district contract for or need necessarily. They do end up taking products that don't go into our traditional recycling compost stream. So it is a way of diverting one more thing from the landfill. So it's a school by school and I, I see quite a bit of them in our schools.
Are the schools getting the money? Cause I heard they get money with, through the recycling program.
Uh-huh.
That was, oh, that's great.
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, Sam, I wasn't... Shelley?
Yeah, I just wanted to say over the years, I've just seen BVSD get more and more sophisticated about all the sustainability, um, efforts that we're making. And, um, when I read this presentation, I, um, downloaded it and gave it to the staff at Chautauqua. And they were just poring over it to see what they could learn from it. And I just, you guys are just so impressive and I want to thank you for all the hard work you've done over the years.
Okay, uh, any other questions? All right, then we'll go, move on to our next item, which is, uh, item number seven, action items consent grouping. Seven point one, approval of minutes, April ninth, twenty nineteen, special meeting. Seven point two, approval of minutes, April ninth, twenty nineteen, regular meeting. Seven point three, acceptance of donations, Centaurus High School. Seven point four, acceptance of donation, Fairview High School. Seven point five, change order to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond funded improvement work at Coal Creek Elementary School. Seven point six, change order to the construction manager general contractor contract for bond funded improvement work at Heatherwood Elementary School. Seven point seven, non-renewal of contracts. Seven point eight, grant transportation alternative fuel vehicles, regional air quality council, twenty nineteen. Does anyone want to make a motion to? Okay, and a sec, or I'm sorry, does anyone want to pull any items? Need to ask that first. Anyone want to pull anything? Okay, so, motion to remove by Kitty, second by Shelley. Any questions or comments? All right, Laura, do you want to call the roll?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sergeant.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, our next item is our action item, eight point one, consideration of request to accept matter for review pursuant to district policy, K-E-R. All right, um, and to start the discussion, I think we need a motion. Anyone want to make a motion? Any motion at all? Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, to, uh, deny the matter of review for pursuant to district policy, K-E-R. Do I have a second? Okay, um, a second by Kathy. Okay.
I'd like to move to table the motion to deny the KE complaint, to give the complainant an opportunity to process the district's recent response to his questions, which I believe he received yesterday, and also had the opportunity to meet with the superintendent to get any additional questions he has answered. If, after speaking with the superintendent, the complainant still wants to file a KE appeal, the board will hear that appeal at the next regular board meeting.
Second. Can I ask a question?
And, uh, yes, is this a process question?
Yes.
Okay, go, cause I probably have the same question.
Shelley, so what you say is we, if we go with your motion, then we're accepting it for, it's not a process then you're saying, cause then we'd hear the appeal. It's not additional time and then we do this motion again. I didn't, the way I understood your, what you said is that the next, the next school board meeting, we would hear his appeal.
If he still has it.
So we wouldn't go back to deciding whether we wanted to hear it?
No, we would vote on it.
Vote on whether we would hear it?
Yes, it would be the same issue we have tonight.
That's what I was trying to, it's...
Yeah, a, after he's, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I heard it the way Kathy heard it, which wasn't what I heard when you and I talked about it. So what I heard when you and I talked about it is what you just said, that we just tabling it, if we pass this motion, we'll table it. The person, the complainant will read the new information to see if they still want to file an appeal that their complaint was not handled properly. And then we would vote on whether or not to hear the appeal in two weeks.
I think that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
What am I saying differently than that?
It just sounded, Shelley, like you said, if we table it, then we are going to hear the appeal, not the process about whether we'll hear the appeal.
No, it's whether we'll hear it or not.
Okay.
The same question we had before us tonight. Yes, sorry. Yeah.
Okay, so that, so now we have two motions on the table.
You have to have discussion on this one.
So now we're going to discuss Shelley's motion.
Yeah. So, um, I, first I'd like to say that I think there's a misunderstanding among many people here tonight about what we're here to discuss. We're not here to discuss any sort of discrimination complaint by the complainant. We're here to discuss whether the district met its requirements in terms of, um, responding to the complainant's KE policy, um, complaint, KE complaint. So, um, those provisions, the provisions in that policy are things like, did the compliance officer meet with the person making the complaint? Did they do it within the prescribed timeframe? Did they answer the questions fully? Those are the kinds of things that we're here to talk about, not any sort of discrimination complaint. So, um, I happen to think that, um, that the district, um, absolutely had the best intentions all along the way. And I believe that, um, technically they met the requirements of responding to the complaint. But I also think that in that process, there was a lot of confusion. Confusion, um, that, that was not, um, intentional, I don't think. But nonetheless, I think that it exists still now. And I believe the district tried to, um, alleviate some of that confusion by responding to the complainant and, um, um, in detail to each one of the questions. But that response came very, very recently. And I feel like, um, the complainant may not have had time to process that, to see if he feels like his questions have been answered. And that he might have a couple other questions that stem from that and that he should have an opportunity to meet with the superintendent. And, um, in that process, um, he may feel like he no longer has a, a complaint, or he may feel like he still does. And at that point, he can come to the board and the board can, can rule on that. I just feel like there's been enough confusion and enough lack of clarity in this process that, um, we're no longer quite meeting the spirit of the policy, which is to hear what the public has to say and to address their concerns. And I feel like in this case, the complainant feels like we haven't heard the concerns. And that is the duty of the board to do that. So that's why I'm suggesting tabling for a couple of weeks and letting that conversation go on.
And clarification, you said that this response may prompt more questions. Would you consider having an open forum to respond to those questions?
No, I meant more, more questions for the superintendent that he could respond in their conversation.
So this could just kind of keep going on?
No, it would, the superintendent would have an opportunity to meet with the complainant. And whether the superintendent's responses were adequate or not, we would still vote on this in two weeks. There would not be a lot of back and forth going on.
Have you ever met with the complainant?
As part of this process and as, as part of our policy, I designated, um, our assistant superintendent and she met with the complainant.
Okay, so she was the compliance officer in this, yeah?
The designate, yes.
Okay.
Which is, which is the superintendent's right to do that, absolutely. I just think there may have been some confusion about that process because we all understand it, but not everyone in the public understands that process.
Richard?
At the last board meeting, we ta, we decided to wait because we got the information at that last moment. And we all decided to wait because we want to go through the information. I feel like I had ample time to go through the information that was provided to me. So Shelley, with all due respect, I'm going to go against your motion.
Well, I'd just say, Richard, that the information in that binder was very, very helpful. But the response I'm talking about just came yesterday. That information was not in the binder. The district's response to the thirteen questions in the complaint, which I think they did a great job of. Uh, I think it's very clear now where the district stands. And I, I just think since it, that information came so recently that it's worth giving a few more weeks to process that.
I, from my perspective, I don't, it wasn't any new information, just as the binder actually was not new information for me. And I think it's, it is nice that the district reorganized it in a way that was clear and should be a best practice for moving forward. But at this juncture, I, I don't feel like we should table it yet again. Donna?
Well, I, I'm struggling with this and, um, my thoughts by denying to hear the complaint, which they feel the process was not handled adequately. Yes, our, um, policy is open to interpretation by the reader. And depending on if a district person reads it or the community reads it, they have a different interpretation. So I'm struggling with this. Would our board be setting a very bad precedent? A precedent for this board to refuse to hear the issues and concerns brought forward by the community or this person that represents some people in the community due to a policy that's loosely worded. I think we need to work on our policies. That's what we're doing as we review these policies. For example, I, I brought up a couple of board meetings ago that some of our policies need to have more, um, direct wording. And I was told that, yes, but having that, um, specific and that specificity to policy will keep us, will hold us too accountable. But I think this is a case... But I think this is a case where we need specificity. And the complainants did not feel that their questions were answered, and, and many of them weren't. And I, I'm confused on that. The answers might have come through last night. In the end, a board hearing does not mean the outcome will change at all. It will mean that we heard their complaint and they get complete answers, not answers that just say, because I said so, or because policy says so. I, I want explanation. There are enough unanswered questions in my mind to allow this to go forward. This is what I'd like, I'd want to do for any group. And, and so I would like to table it to see if we can come to a resolution with the complainants and, and say, you saw these que- these, your questions were answered last night. Let's try to work together and come to some understanding, common ground. And my hope would be that then they would want to drop it, because they would have all their answers.
Other board members? Kitty?
Yeah, so Shelley, you saw the answers to all the thirteen points?
Yeah, they came to all of us.
I didn't, when was that?
I think there was an email yesterday.
Did I miss it?
Yes.
In the thousands of emails we've.
Rob, go on, talk to me.
To clarify for the board and for the public, the complainant had been requesting a point-by-point, item-by-item response to, to his complaint. We had tried to work several times to work with him to kind of try to get him the information in the ways that, that we felt like he would best understand it. For President Marcus, to your point, the information that was shared yesterday was not new information. All that information was within the original response. And so it wasn't new information, it was organized in a new way to hope, to hopefully better understand the complaint and the position of the district.
Kathy?
No, I'm comfortable that there was no new information given, it was just reformatted.
Okay, any, Sam, do you want to chime in? Okay, so, um, should we call Shelley's motion to a vote? All right, Laura, do you want to call the roll call? This is on Shelley's motion to table the, uh, appeal.
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua.
No.
Garcia.
No.
Gebhardt.
No.
Marquess.
No.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay. And so the next motion is my motion to deny the appeal. And in terms of process, I feel that the district followed the A C R process and provided the information. I do feel that there was an opportunity to format the information better, that would have been helpful. But in terms of going through the process in an appeal process, um, as, you know, I don't think is the right direction. I think that the, I believe that the district did well. I just also want to comment about the use of three lawyers. I think it shows just how seriously we took this complaint, that we spent a lot of time with other people and outside opinions to deeply understand the process and make sure that the district followed the process. And that was the point of having three lawyers, or I, I think it was really two, we just had a change of employment during that process. But that was to be very careful with how we treated this complaint and make sure that they, we weren't, you know, there wasn't a policy violation. So, again, that's in the eye of the beholder, but that's how I view that level of scrutiny that we gave the complaint. Thanks. Comments?
Just a quick, I, I realize Boulder Valley School District made a big mistake in a memo that went out, which is why a lot of you are here tonight. And that memo was inappropriate, and, and I think Dr. Anderson has acknowledged that and apologized for that. But I think we made some serious mistakes in, if we don't consider this K E complaint as well.
Other comments, board members? Shelley?
Yeah, I, I just want to say, I, I feel like, again, I want to say, I feel like the district had the very best intentions throughout this entire process. But in the end, the result was confusing to the complainant. And I feel like because of that, they should have the opportunity to come here and get their questions answered. If we're not going to table this, then we should let them come, ask their questions and have the district respond. I think that's only fair, and we would do that for any group, it has nothing to do with what their opinion is on any subject. So I feel like we should hear this, we should hear this appeal, just out of a question of due process.
I was just going to say that I agree with Tina. I do think that we've done everything we possibly can. We have talked to attorneys, and the reason for attorneys is to tell us, are we doing the right thing? Is there something in the law we are not following? And we found out that we were following the law and we were doing the right thing. And certainly I understand why the complainant was confused with the initial response, because it didn't hit this point-by-point. But this second one did, and it didn't change anything in the outcome of the explanation. So I'm, you know, I don't think we need to review this and hear an appeal. And the, the appeal would only be about whether or not we did it right, it would have nothing to do with the content.
All right, are you guys ready to call this for a vote?
I think, Kitty, it would have to do with whether we did it right or not, and I think that we would find that we did do it right. But I think there is something besides the, the technical aspect of this, which is, again, the spirit of this, which is having people feel like they've been heard in front of this body, which is one of our roles. And right now, we have someone who feels like they haven't been, in fact, a group of people. So that's the, that is the primary reason I would like to hear this.
I'd like to respond to Shelley. I think there are other ways people can be heard, and because I feel confident, confident that the appeal is about whether policy A C R was followed, I believe it was followed, but Rob, I'm hoping that you can help find a way to work with the families within the context of our efforts to make the school work for all kids and, and have those kinds of conversations. Just because we don't hear this appeal does not mean that there can't be conversation, that there can't be a way to find a pathway forward. So I hope that that's an option.
And I hope in the future, we don't make the same mistakes. I hope that we can change policy so that we're very specific on what has to be done. Because one of the board's responsibilities, according to policy B B A, is judicial, along with executive and legislative. Judicial policy B B A reads, "The board is responsible for acting as a court of appeal for school, staff members, students, and the public when issues involve board policies and their fair implementation." But B A policy goes on to say, "The board is responsible to the community and therefore should attempt to take into account the opinion of the community and reconcile competing values." So I, I realize we got advice from two attorneys. But I also realize that attorney's job is to represent the school district. And I believe that this group of parents and attorney for them might have a different view. I'd like to see the board get their own actual attorney, but that's another topic. Anyway, I, I, I would like to hear the, what the complaints, complainants have to say and give them the opportunity to have the questions answered with, not just because policy says so, but here's the rationale. We all want answers. I don't want to tell my kids because I said so. I, I want to tell them my reasoning behind it.
Any other comments? Kathy?
I just want to say, I think we had competent counsel. I think if we had violated policy, it would have been their ethical duty to tell us that. Just because they represent the school district doesn't mean they rubber stamp our decisions. So that's why we actually talked to counsel, is to find out whether we're complying with what we're supposed to be doing. So I just wanted to say that I think that we have competent ethical counsel giving us advice. And I would echo what Tina said, which is, this is a procedural, technical issue. And I'm hoping, Rob, that you'll continue to work with the families and the parents to make sure that they fully understand what's going on and that we have a, a good path forward for everybody and all the children in our district.
And I just want to say, I do not question their competency.
Sam?
Just to reinforce what Kathy said, I mean, one of the reasons we have attorneys review things is to tell us if we screwed up. And with three attorneys looking at this, with our discussions, with all the materials that have been provided, this is about whether the process and the policy was filed, and I'm comfortable that it was. I'm sorry that the families don't feel heard, I want you to know that I have heard you. I'm certainly willing to have continuing conversations about some of the issues that have been raised. But, but I'm not going to, to vote to move this appeal forward.
Okay, shall we call the roll for the vote? Laura, thanks.
Benford.
Can you restate the motion, please?
The motion is to deny consideration of the complaint. Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
No.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. All right, so our next item is policy action, policies pulled from consent grouping, we don't have that. Uh, and then our next item is item eleven, study items, agenda setting. All right, so.
Don't you have policy, or, item nine?
Oh, sorry.
Board policy adoption.
I'm so sorry. Item nine, policy, uh, board policy adoptions, J I C J, student use of cell phones and other personal technology devices. All right, so this is a policy we discussed a couple of weeks ago, and the board had given feedback that we are ready to move forward this, with this policy. So I'd just like to make a motion to approve this policy, do we have a second? All right, and so now discussion and comments. Any questions or comments about policy J I C J? All right, yeah?
I'd just like to say it's a huge improvement, and I really appreciate the district moving in this direction. I think it's going to be really, really helpful. So thank you.
Um, all right, do you want to call the roll?
Tina, I have one quick question. How will we, I mean, I know this is, we are adopting it tonight, how will we get the word out to buildings and, so people know what are?
Right, and I, and I do think this is in our, usually in our student handbook, is one of the, yeah.
I think it goes into effect as soon as we adopt it, so I'm just wondering how we advise people about it.
We'll have something due by Friday on our implementation plan.
Good question. Laura, do you want to call the vote?
Benford. Fuqua.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Sargent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, and then now we're doing study items and agenda setting. So, uh. Any thing, and, and just a reminder, we're going to be meeting with, be conducting our board prioritization meeting with Heather, I think in May, I believe. And just so you're thinking ahead to what you want to see on the list, that we're going to prioritize, these are opportunities to do that. You can also send an email, all right, Sam?
Yeah, and, I mean, just to state the obvious, one of the things that's come up around this situation is some questions around how we decide what constitutes a controversial issue and who decides that. And so I think I would just like to put that into the agenda setting hopper for a, a board discussion and a discussion with the superintendent.
Great. Any other comments or thoughts? All right, um, then with that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Public participation.
Oh, public participation, I'm so sorry, we, we never go over like that, so. All right, so our next item is to continue public participation. All right, so Laura, do you want to call the?
Yes, one moment.
Wait, did we need a break first? Yes, I heard some yeses, all right, we'll take a five-minute break. All right, let's continue public participation, and, um. I'll just wait for Laura, since she's the list keeper. Laura, do you want to call the next person up?
I shall.
Thank you.
Bean S. Andrew Yonachilo is on deck, as is Kate Bachtel.
Hello, my name is Amaya, also known as Bean. And I am here today because I believe in LGBTQ plus rights. If LGBTQ plus and gender identity rights are silenced, then people who have struggled so much in the past and still do will be silenced again. This is so not right. Some of my close friends have struggled so much with this topic, and I have as well. I, me, my friends and I will not be silenced again, and I think I speak for a lot of people when I say that. I also want to point out that Christianity and God are mentioned so much more than LGBTQ plus rights and gender identity issues. And, and, um, it's, our teachers don't give us lectures on those topics. But actually, I have had a class where we had a lecture from one of my teachers about God and Christianity. I think we should be having lectures about LGBTQ plus and gender identity instead. I believe, I, even, when my teachers mention God and Christianity, I am not threatened because I have, because I have a different belief. I believe that all people are equal and we should all be treated equally. So I believe that people shouldn't be threatened by LGBTQ plus and gender identity. Thank you.
Hello, hello. I'm sad the audience isn't here, I'm a sucker for a crowd. My name is Drew Mundy Yonachilo, my badge number is one, seven, nine, four, zero, pronouns are they/them? And I am trans and an educator in the Boulder Valley School District. I currently work at five elementary schools and a charter high school in the district where I am visible to two thousand, one hundred and eight young learners every week as a member of the community, as a teacher, as a role model, and as a trans person. Unfortunately, I am gawked at regularly, met with gaping mouths when I greet children, "Good morning." Misgendered no less than ten to thirty times on a daily basis in my own schools. And I hear whispers follow me in the hallways filled with confusion. Most of my students do not have the language to understand who I am. These are real, relevant issues that require cultural change and earnest attention. As of two Fridays ago, I am banned from serving our country's military, but today I stand before you to serve these schools and your children. I am afraid to talk about who I am in front of my students. The content, this content is not aimed to indoctrinate children or impede on religious beliefs. It is for students to better understand themselves and those around them whom they do not know how to communicate with. Furthermore, without this education, it can open a door to increased misunderstanding and aggression towards trans folk. And we are all well aware of the numbers regarding violence towards the trans community. Students see trans people in their lives, whether they know it or not. We are teachers, doctors, lawyers, politicians, working professionals, artists, and lovers, but most of all, we are and always have been fighters, we are not relegated to the shadows. We are not tragedies and things to be mourned, we are vibrant, valuable, giving and essential members of our community. I kindly, but am urgently grateful that you denied the appeal, and I thank you so much for your time.
Kate Bachtel, on deck is Judy Stone and Christine Johnson.
Let's try to keep to the two minutes, all right?
In celebration of the bright youth leaders who spoke tonight, in honor of the student who's no longer enrolled at Superior Elementary and as a result of bullying behavior, I yield my time to one of their inspiring teachers. yield my time to one of their inspiring teachers. I remember the first student who ever told me that he was gay in my first year. At that time, I was not aware of any district policy regarding LGBTQIA+ issues, and so I faced a scared student as a scared teacher that he decided to trust. I felt, out of my depth with this student, I had had no formal training to help guide me in trying to support this student. Since that time, I can no longer count the number of students who have come out to me or to other teachers. Over the 22 years that I have been in this district, I have seen the culture of acceptance and affirmation change significantly to the benefit of all my students, and I have changed. I have, I have attended conferences, professional development, collaborations with experts in the field of gender and sexual diversity, all provided by you, BVSD, and by a queer endeavor who you brilliantly decided to hire to help support teachers like me. The education has supported my own understanding of LGBTQIA+ issues. It has empowered me to better support my students. My students deserve nothing less. I am not neutral about my students' identities. My students are not controversies. They are vibrant, amazing, awesome students, three of whose voices you have heard tonight, and I could not be prouder to have been part of their lives. Thank you all so much for supporting me in the development I needed so that I can support kids in the development that they need. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Judy Stone. My preferred pronouns are she/her/hers. And I came here tonight to tell you that I have the dream job. I'm a second grade teacher, and I work for Boulder Valley. And because I work for Boulder Valley, I've been involved in many relevant and important trainings. Boulder Valley supports its teachers. Recently, you adopted a literacy unit. Not only does Boulder Valley buy materials for our students, you also train your teachers, as we had that amazing training through Fontis and Pennell. I've been involved in trainings for science and STEM. I've been trained in many cohorts for literacy and math. I am, however, most proud of my work with the Queer Endeavor. I've worked with the Queer Endeavor for the past four years, and as a second grade teacher, I've been able to utilize and develop lessons that show all children that they are valued and affirmed. Because I'm able to be weaving in my Equity books throughout the curriculum, there is no queer week, there is no Latino week, and there is no Black week. Because of the training I receive through Queer Endeavor and being a part of our Equity cohort, I can weave these materials in on a daily basis. I am proud to say that my students recognize themselves and their families in the curriculum. They see people like them and positive role models throughout the day. I am so proud to be a part of Boulder Valley School District where, in a time where people say, "No, you're not good enough and you don't belong," I say, "Yes." We say, "Yes." We say, "You're welcome." We say, "Please come, you are enough, we value you." I came here tonight to say thank you for investing in me so that I might invest in my families, so that my students may come and see themselves represented each day, and so that they know their families are always valued, and that LGBTQ+IA children are not controversial nor are their families. Thank you so much.
Christine Johnson, and on deck we have Eileen Kiernan-Johnston and Amanda Cherry. Is Christine here?
I don't see her.
How about Amanda Cherry? Kate Farnin. Veronica Leschek. David Heitman. Max Hansel.
So, I believe that you may have gotten my name mixed up over the phone, but that's okay. My name is Max Samtsel. I'm an openly gay ninth grader at Boulder High School, and because my argument was made before you guys denied the action, I would just like to say thank you. For one, BVSD respecting my way of, my vision of what I see, and then as well as other students' identities and what they prospect for themselves in life. And, you know, I sat here for two hours waiting for that to either be denied or approved, and I really just like to say thank you that you denied it. Thank you.
Glenda Russell. Rachel Friend. Josie Nixon. Karen Axe. Dawn Reinfeld. Hillary Hall. Heather Bowler. Gina Lash. Diana Sherry. Marceline Ball. Margie Rush, okay.
Hi, so much has been said tonight. I'm not even sure what is left to be said, but thank you for dealing with this really difficult topic. I agree with so much of what has been said tonight. I am a parent of a child who was at Superior Elementary and is no longer there, and this child is very brave and noticed and was very wise during all of the opting out that happened at Superior Elementary, because it was a snowball. The few families that started it got other families scared of, "Oh, my God, what are our children going to learn?" No, they're not going to learn about sex. There's a lot of ignorance out there. And my child said, "You know what? Mama, the families that are opting out are exactly the kids who are making fun of me. They're exactly the kids that need this." And I said, "I know, honey, I can't do anything about it." So to re, to change your minds on that memo is so necessary, because it's ignorance that breeds hatred, it's ignorance that breeds fear, it's ignorance that makes a neo-Nazi want to kick in the face of a Muslim because they do not know any Muslims, and they don't understand that they have the same hearts as us. So the education is so important that all of our children are safe, and you know what? I also know the family who filed the complaint, our children are friends, and they are nice people, and they are unfortunately very misguided. And this has nothing to do with religion, this is human rights, so you have made the right choice. This is not a controversy, this is people. Thank you.
Michael Muller.
The guidance that I saw in a memo to facilitate parents opting out of gender discussions threatens my child's life. My transgender daughter attends elementary school in Boulder Valley School District. She transitioned in the summer between kindergarten and first grade. When we learned and accepted that our child was transgender, we were terrified. We are aware of the extent to which some elements of our society marginalize transgender people. That marginalization, the communication that being transgender is wrong, or the denial of being transgender is even a real condition, has terrible psychological impact. As observed earlier, the American Academy of Pediatrics found that nearly a third of all transgender girls report having attempted suicide. More than half of the boys reported the same. Support from a transgender person's family and community reduces this rate significantly, according to a study by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So we were hugely relieved that our daughter experienced wide exception within the school and our community. My wife and I believe that a large part of that acceptance is because of the first-grade teachers taking a few minutes to read a children's book about a transgender girl. We are hugely grateful to the teachers and the administration of our school for this support. You've not only made our little girl's life easier, you may have helped to save it. We respect the right of parents to inform their children's opinions, but do not think that it is reasonable or healthy for the parents to have their views be the only information a student gets. That is what these parents are trying to accomplish, their voices will be the only ones their children hear on this topic. They are denying information to their children, making them ignorant, which leads to transphobia and bullying. By facilitating willful ignorance of a portion of the population, you foster the bullies that threaten my child's life. So if this guidance is still in place, please reconsider it.
Isaac Carner.
Well, I'm the lone holdout here for the, in support of the KE appeal. My name's Isaac Carner, I live in Broomfield, Colorado. I am a father, and as a Christian, it's, it's hard to hear my beliefs mischaracterized. And I want to say thank you to the board members who acknowledged that there were mistakes made in this whole process, that means a lot. Unfortunately, the way the whole process has been mishandled, and the decision that was made tonight bureaucratically marginalizes this group of parents. You've told them that their concerns don't matter, that your policies and your procedures are more important than that. And none of this was about saying that any kid is a controversy. This is an ideology, this is a set of beliefs that is being held in higher esteem than another set of beliefs. And that's not right. And by the decision that was made here tonight, you're forcing one set of beliefs on another set of beliefs, onto people who don't hold those beliefs, by not allowing parents the option to opt out. And to just have the agency to take responsibility of how their kids learn about these issues, and to teach their kids how to love each individual person, no matter their persuasion, no matter their identity, no matter their color or race. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Bethany Sprague.
May I speak on behalf of the...
No. Amanda Brown.
Hi, I'm Amanda Brown. Most of you are familiar faces. I just wanted to make brief remarks. I'm a parent of a third grader and a fifth grader at Community Montessori, and I'm a member of a Christian faith community at First Congregational UCC Church in Boulder, and I wanted to express an opinion, or dispel sort of the myth of, you know, Christian values being antithesis to progressive, open and affirming faith communities. So that was one point. And I just, I was a little shocked this morning when I was reading the memo that was sent out, because it just seemed different than my experience working very much with the Boulder Valley School District. I think we all want to create an environment where every child feels safe, seen, and heard, and I worry that creating an opt-in-out situation around gender identity specifically creates a hostile environment for transgendered and non-gender conforming kids. And I think that that message is heard, and I'm hopeful for everyone moving forward with that. Asking schools to notify and create an opt-out provision for any instruction around gender identity contributes to a harmful perception. At best, it frames learning as unnecessary or extra, and at worst, as deviant in some way, so thank you.
Leo Day. Tom Satter.
I'm Tom Satter, my pronouns are they/them. I'm a parent of two children who attend BVSD schools, actually, one of them just graduated a while back. I was a high school teacher in BVSD for four years, I taught science. BVSD's current policy is that the educational programs and activities are offered without regard to disability, race, creed, sex, color, sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression. And it goes on. Your policy already says the gender identity and expression is just like all the other protected classes at BVSD, it's not controversial. The only controversy here is whether you're going to teach the students in your district in coherence with that already stated policy. I'd like you to consider the implications if you change the opt-out. I know you've said that the policy, the advisory statement, was badly worded. Well, I don't know how you're planning to word it, but if there's going to be an opt-out, I need you to think about that. Like, what would the, consider the implications if you changed your opt-out statement to allow parents to opt their students out of instruction that includes reference to race? Is that crazy? Yeah, so is gender identity. It's exactly the same in your policy statement, they're identical. Your advisory statement implies that people only need to be notified if a lesson is going to talk about non-majority gender identities. That's the implication of it. There are lessons and assemblies given every day that do not refer explicitly to gender identity, but reinforce the idea that there's a preferred gender identity, because that's the example that's set constantly by the majority. When I was teaching science, I would regularly point out that science discoveries are made by all types of people, men, women, gay, straight, cis, transgender, fluid, all races and nationalities. If I wanted to point out that Ben Barris was an amazing neuroscientist, and was a transgender man, and was a huge supporter of LGBTQIA people participating in science, and you keep that policy, I have to keep, tell my parents they can opt out of that lesson, because that was part of my instructional plan. So, I want, change your policy.
Tanya Muftegh.
Hello, I'm Tanya Muftegh, and I am an extremely lucky teacher who gets to work at BVSD, and I couldn't be more grateful. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I am speaking as a gay teacher, out and proud, and the president of the Thai Tuesday Project, which is a nonprofit I started a year ago to spread a way of showing LGBTQIA students that educators care. I was upset when I saw the memo, because I teach all students, I don't get a say in who my students are, and I have never, ever, in my entire life, found a single human being controversial. I don't understand that. So, my being gay is also not controversial, it's human. And I ask myself as a teacher if that directive were to go forward, and I'm glad, I believe it's not going forward, I'm not completely 100% sure, but to think about, does that mean that if we exclude gender identity, if I were teaching about Martin Luther King, and a group of people felt that black people were controversial, do I have to send an email to my parents? What about Caesar Chavez? Would that be another person? Because frankly, I don't see a difference between being queer, or gay, or black, or one of the marginalized groups in America. Every day I wake up, I feel threatened, I feel hated, I feel chased and hunted. But I go to work every day in a really strong place of privilege because I'm an adult, and I continue to stand for every child who cannot speak for themselves. So, I just implore you to think of a place of privilege and have compassion for those who don't understand, because they are privileged. Thank you.
Seth Rose. Karen Bolz. Daniel Lehman.
Hi, I wrote a speech while I was here, but I'm going to cede my time to this human being. Daniel Lehman, teacher in Boulder Valley.
Hi there. My name's Ella, my pronouns are they/them. I'm trans, I'm non-binary, I'm femme, and I'm hella queer. I heard about this just last night. I have no, like, real connections with BVSD. I went to private schools here in Boulder, I grew up here, but just hearing about this memo and hearing about the, yeah, just like what was going on here, like, really, it brings me to, like, this thing that I keep thinking about, where it's, it's really hard for me not to get sucked into the mindset of who... it's, it's really hard for me not to get sucked into the mindset of whoever I'm talking to, especially when they're coming from a place of such obvious, like, they're intending well. They truly believe this. And, and so I think it's this, it's this funny circular logic, because we're talking about education around, around this thing that is, it's based on, I mean, there's, yeah, wow, so many thoughts. Anyway, I just think that education around these things is really necessary. And growing up in Boulder and going to these small private schools, there was really no queer representation at all. And I know that for me, going, after coming out, this is about two years ago, this is after I graduated high school, and just looking back and, like, seeing all these kids who are, like, so much more aware of themselves than I was at that age, it's just, like, it wrenches at my heart, like, knowing that, like, this is possible. And it's all because of, like, this time that we're living in where there is so much more representation and so much more education, and that is such a good thing for people to be able to understand themselves more and understand the people that are around more. And, yeah, so I think that this was a really good thing for me to come see, and thank you.
Kate Ricklin. Erin Shannon. Melissa Nuneo.
Hi, my name is Melissa Nuneo. I'm a parent. I have two high schoolers here in Boulder High. I'm also transgender. And one thing that I haven't heard people say is that this is accepted by the World Health Organization, the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association. This is not controversial to people who have studied the matter. This is science. If you allow people to opt out, you may as well allow them to opt out of evolution, algebra, or anything else. So please do not allow opting out of science.
We have one more speaker on non-agenda items. Amy Schroeder.
All right.
Thank you, everyone.
So thank you all for coming and participating this evening. It was wonderful to have so many people engaged in our process. And as always, we read our emails, so if you have follow-up thoughts, feel free to email us. And I'd like to adjourn this meeting.